Information about that.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from a previous meeting from June 7th, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll move approve all of those minutes from June 20, June 7, 2021.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes has been moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Shonda. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. That's dated. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I'd like to motion to move council comment after public comment.
There is a motion to move council comment after public comment. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Okay, just a second. All right, Ms. Wu?
Uh, no.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Great, that motion passes. We will move on to public input and presentations. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to this committee, please raise your hand and we will call on you. I'm having a technical problem that's not making it so I can't see who's raising their hands. Here we go. First person I see is Marilyn.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Marilyn Heinson. I live at 206 East California Street. The tenants or residents that is in a lot of communication with the city of Cunningham Township. I would just like to notify you that I noticed this evening you have a new, the supervisor's report. I actually went to the library and pulled that off. And there was a letter that I'm sure you read through that was addressed to the tenants. However, as I am a tenant, and this letter was supposedly emailed or mailed or delivered as the first message pasted to my door on June 7th. I did not receive this letter. And after reading it, I was looking at it today. And it is saying, you know, there were no lease renewals past July 31st. Of course, they found out that I have a lease until 2022. It said after the contract of sale. Now, I could be incorrect. I'm not legally, you know, astute. But I know that one of our tenants actually told the supervisor herself the day before the paperwork was signed on May 6th that she lived here. And, you know, there were several of our tenants that actually had turned their leases in, but the landlord never sent them back. And in my understanding, anyone with any common sense with an apartment building of eight tenants, you would assume that people would want to stay here. Because it's right downtown Urbana. Urbana is a super place to live. The rent is reasonable. So, you know, I don't understand how anyone could believe that no one wanted to stay here. We have tenants that have been here five years, three years. This is my first year. I was hoping to stay here to retire. I think most of you have seen the letter that I emailed you. And I would just like to point out that in this letter that she gave everybody on June 10th, giving them the incentive to move by August 15th. It says, please note, the May 7th letter does not mandate a move out date, only an incentive date of August the 15th. Well, I'm not sure if you saw this letter, but I would like to read it to you. For all current residents, whether you have a renewed lease or not, we can provide $2,000 per household to support moving expenses you may incur such as deposit or down payment, first month's rent, utility hookups and moving costs. To be eligible for this moving assistance, you must vacate your unit no later than August 15th, 2021. That does not sound like it's an option. Because if you don't vacate by August 15th and your lease was up in June or May, as many of the tenants here were, because they were assuming they were going to get a renewal, then what is the option here? From my understanding, maybe it's month to month, which means they don't have to move at all. So I am a little confused. I'm also confused why the council, you've had several of my community members over here in this little small section of downtown Urbana that have contacted you in regards to the situation. And we have no heard, had not heard any comments by anybody. In fact, the supervisor won't even come over here and speak to us. But yet, my friends and fellow tenants are supposed to go looking for apartments in the middle of COVID and have been told by many places that they are not to do anything unless it's virtually. So why would they have to move out? Thank you for your time. And this is just ridiculous that the Cunningham Township, who's supposed to be for the people, is putting people out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council. I'm, I just have to ask, what meeting is this? When I looked at the calendar, I saw, I think, four meetings. And I'm confused and not aware of which one this is.
This is the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting.
Committee of the Whole meeting. Okay, I was under the impression there was a Cunningham Township meeting. Is that canceled?
It's been moved to 6:30, so we will have a recess at that time to discuss an item related to the township. And then we'll come back to public comment, assuming that there are still folks who would like to speak after that point.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm still confused. Will, will, will I get a subsequent chance to address the council?
So it depends on how long comment runs. We will have a recess at 6:30. And if there are individuals who haven't spoken, we will resume public comment. Otherwise, we will move on to council comment. There were some changes to the agenda, so I apologize for the confusion.
No problem. But if, at that point, when, when you all do move on, will there be a subsequent meeting this evening? I'm still confused. I apologize. So I'm seeing City Council Committee of the Whole, Public Hearing to Consider an Ordinance, Public Hearing to Receive Input and Cunningham Township Board Meeting. I'm just really confused as to where I can speak and when. I'm not ready to speak right now is the problem.
We can come back to you. It might be before we recess, or it might be after, depending on how many individuals would like to speak to council. Or sorry, the whole, rather.
Okay, I appreciate it and I apologize for not being prepared.
Next, we have Dilla Williams.
Hi, good evening. I have spoken before and I also live at 206 East California. And I want to just reiterate how difficult this process has been looking for housing, especially when we already have a home. This is my fifth year at 206 East California. And the township supervisor has mentioned on more than one occasion that this situation was caused by the previous owners and their real estate agent for their lack of transparency regarding leases that we were executing with the former owner. So I really feel if the township was in fact a victim of real estate fraud, you are now making us unwilling victims too. I have a friend sitting here with me because we're just talking about her actually trying to purchase a home for us to rent, because it's very, very difficult to find housing at reasonable prices when we already have reasonable, affordable living. I do understand the homeless situation, but I also want you to fully understand that we need accommodations too. I cannot put out $300 to $400 extra just for someone else to have a place to live. Again, my hours have been reduced at work. If this doesn't work out with my friend possibly purchasing a home for us to rent, we have to find a cosigner for us. And I really truly think if we in fact have to move, that the township should be cosigning for each and every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Payne.
Is this an appropriate time to talk about anti-violence prevention? I just want to make sure that I'm in the right public comment, if that's okay.
You are welcome to speak on whatever topic you would like to, yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Josh Payne. I'm an Anti-Gun Violence and Outreach Intervention Specialist for the City of Champaign and Urbana. I served as the Outreach Manager for TRUST, Champaign, Urbana's only grassroots intervention, anti-violence prevention method that this city has truly seen over the last five, 10 years. And I'm now working with the Chama Coalition Group for the Chama Working Group, the Healing Communities Chama Working Group, let me say that right, for the Coalition through the City of Champaign. And I'm here speaking tonight on behalf of First Followers on a committee that I'm working with on First Followers that is devising a new anti-violence initiative. I'm coming before you this evening, torn and broken to pieces with the amount of deaths and violence that has taken place in our cities. I'm asking this council, the wonderful Mayor Marlin, who I greatly respect, my dear friend, Ms. Reese Hershey, and many other council members who I know, to please, please allow mentors and outreach and anti-gun violence intervention specialists like myself or the work that First Followers is doing and partner with other organizations like the HBNT, like the CU Tribe. We are all coming together right now to build a one-stop-shop model. And I am putting every bit of my expertise that I have been trained in through Violence Interrupters, through Ceasefire Chicago, through the Richmond Model out of California, and other various things that this community has spent resources investing in me to train me throughout the years to be able to do this work. This is the worst stretch of violence that we have seen ever. In my, in my knowledge and working experience, this has been the most bloodiest, terrible time that we have ever faced. And I'm asking and begging and pleading this council to consider to put as much money of the ARC funding that they have together towards anti-violence prevention and potentially grassroots like a one-stop-shop model. And specifically, the need, as I know, as I have responded to multiple shooting incidences and death, gun violence incidences that caused death throughout the years, that one of the biggest abilities I have as an outreach intervention specialist is to be able to get a family to safety. But if I do not have community resources and funding to be able to place a family through emergency displacement into a safer place, I cannot have the leverage that I need to get in to help disrupt and stop this violence on its front ends and prevent retaliations from happening. I know Champaign has seen a lot more of the violence than Urbana lately, but we are working together to try to devise a way where we can have a community space, a satellite or one-stop-shop, a recreation center, a 24-hour potential anti-violence prevention center that would be an absolute game changer in these cities and give the resources that many of you have already put behind people like myself with the ability to execute that training and skills and dispel and disrupt violence. We must address this violent situations that are going on in our cities, and we must do it in a proactive, aggressive manner. The Bible says the kingdom of God suffers violence and the violent take it by force. We must take our cities back by force. And we must have your support, your resources, your backing, and your go-ahead to trust and enable organizations, trusted organizations like First Followers to help bring this community together. And I'm pleading you to hear and hear and heed the initiatives and the models that we will be presenting and continuing to come back to share with you all. I thank you for your time tonight and God bless you.
Thank you. Next, we have, it's labeled as Business Elevator, if you would state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Mark Pillmore and I am the CEO of Business Elevator, 501(c)(3) here in Champaign, Urbana. And I am coming to you as one of the community businesses that Josh just spoke on that have partnered with First Followers to be part of the Community Violence Initiative that we're working on. And just to give you a perspective from a business, over the past weekend, across the United States, seven individuals were killed and 40 individuals were wounded from gun violence. To bring that closer to home, over the weekend, my wife's cousin was killed. They've recovered 40 casings during this incident. So not only am I seeing it from a economic development standpoint, educational standpoint, but it's just outright violence uptick. So the initiative that we're working on is creating a one-stop shop so we can focus on several things. But three that I really want to point out is mental health care, economic empowerment, and then job training and/or capacity building. And we are hoping that we will be able to present and receive funding from the ARP that has been awarded to Urbana and Champaign and Champaign County. I would like to say that this is not something that we can do on our own. So us partnering together as several community organizations is the way to go. And we would really appreciate you considering how you can help us help our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Minnie Pearson.
Mayor, my, my hand was lowered because Josh spoke and I can reiterate most of the things that he said, so I will be listening. Thank you so much for recognition.
Thank you. I think we have time for maybe one more. James Tiger Corbin, Corbin is next. Looks like that hand is down now, too. I see Wayne Williams.
I sent my comments over to the council earlier today. But I want to have an, I wanted to use this opportunity to say what I said. The mayor over the last few years has moved several positions from appointed to civil service. It's done so without council input. In Sunday's paper, she made it clear that she's going to continue this practice of moving appointed city staff to civil service. This is in contrast to Article 3, Section 2-42 of the City Code, which allows for the mayor and city council to determine which position should be appointed and which should not be. I'm troubled by the lack of transparency involved in the process. On June 2nd, 2004, Mayor Satterwhite made 26 staff appointments. Just a few weeks ago, you were asked to approve 18 staff appointments. The council needs to ask, what happened to the positions? Was the process moving from appointed to civil service? What rationale did the mayor use to make these changes? And was the public ever informed of these changes? I think before any more changes are made to the status of appointed employees, the council needs to make it clear where they stand. If the council deems that appointed staff members should be moved to civil service, so be it. But the mayor should not be allowed to continue to make these unilateral employment moves without city council approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we do have time for another. We have Kanita Fay.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kanita Fay and I have lived in Urbana for nearly 20 years. I would like to thank you all so much for your service. I have been following the meeting and you all have been putting a lot of hours in this. So thank you, thank you, thank you. As you will be making many important decisions, especially regarding public safety that will affect all of us in the city, I would like to urge you to please connect with the Urbana School District, unless you have done so, so your decision would truly support our youth. Urbana is a diverse city and each ward might have different needs. However, our high school and middle school would be the two places that can pretty much tell a story of what's going on in our community. When there was a violence in our community, you can guarantee that the violence would be brought to our school. There have been a lot of misinformation spreading in our city, but Superintendent Ivory Tatum brought President Poloski and Vice President Exum could bring you all up to speed. We hope that the decision concerning public safety will be a thoughtful and will inform one. Because not only would it affect us adults, it would also affect our youth. We hope that you will consider immediate, short-term and long-term solution to minimize disruptions in our community. We understand that we truly need social workers and police officers to work together. And one cannot succeed without the other. We appreciate all the work that all the city staff have done. And we would like you to know that we support and, and we don't tell you enough that we thank you. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. We hope to see all good things come from this group of our wonderful members. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have time to allow the full four minutes for our next public comment. So I would move to recess our meeting at this time. Is there a motion on the floor to do so?
Yeah, I would, I would move that we recess until after the update on the township.
Is that a second?
Well, it's a question first. When we come back, are we going to be continuing public input?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to make sure, okay.
I've been tracking who's in what order as well.
Okay.
Second that if.
Moved by, seconded by Mary Alice. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you, Jaya. And I'm going to wait until 6:30 to convene the meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. So we have a couple of minutes yet.
I will reconvene the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole meeting and we will resume public comment. I am going to give the individuals who are on the list priority and then I will add people in from there. The next person I had scheduled to speak is Charles Davidson.
Okay, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Charles Davidson. I'm from Champaign County. And I've been, I was born and raised here. I've been here over seven years now. So the, the gun violence, I heard the other gentleman was talking about the gun violence and everything. I am a mentor of First Followers. I'm also the community navigator. So we do a lot in First Followers. I've seen a lot, you know. We started a Go Mad program. We went out and got some gentlemen off the street and brought them and showed them, gave them skills and stuff where they can use to get off the street. And it's a good thing because they're still doing it, doing their work. But we need help. You know, I was, back in the 60s, I was, was the worst gun violence, around 66, 65, 67, I thought was going to be the worst gun violence. This is, this is something heavy right here, you know, people are dying. And we need your help, you know. We need to, we need to build a community center so we can get all the, all the organizations in, in our communities up under one roof. So people can come there and see, you know, whatever, domestic battery, mental, mental issues or whatever they need, housing or whatever, you know. And that's what we need. And with your help, I know we can do that. And I appreciate you working with First Followers. I pray you continue to. But we definitely need your help. And I thank you for listening to me. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next, we have a phone number ending in 215. If you'd state your name.
Hello?
We can hear you. There's an echo.
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, can you hear me? Okay, I've got three devices. I'm on the phone. I got my iPad and I got my iPhone. And I've been on ever since and nobody can see my hand. That's why I'm getting on the phone to call. The first, I wanted to talk about the three, the four properties. Who bid it on the properties? No one said anything at that time. Is there more information? And I'm not going to say anymore about that because now I've got to put everything into five minutes. Can you hear me or do I need to turn off one of these devices?
We can hear you. There is an echo, though.
Okay, let me see.
Just turn down the volume.
View string, oh, I'm sorry?
Just turn down the volume on one of your devices.
Okay. But I'm taking my time. I just go ahead. If you can hear me, I don't want to lose any time. There are things on the agenda that I want to speak to. The presentation of cameras in Y3. I want to suggest gunshot detection system that Bloomington Normal, it's right close, Illinois, Bloomington Normal. that um uh uh Bloomington Normal is right close, Illinois, Bloomington Normal. Uh, uh, I've been using and um, did anyone look into that? Um, that's the question. I can go into more detail, but I, I don't want, I wanna take, use some more of my time. Gunshot detection system is what it is called. Um, and um, if you want more information, Bloomington Normal is only fifty miles from here. And uh, I don't know why we haven't looked into that. Additionally, uh, I spoke with um person in the field, uh, cameras and all. And um, he had worked before with several cities. And um, uh, he was telling me uh about um uh, uh, the fact that cameras take pictures and there's sound there. And he also talked about uh, the fact why isn't there a plan for the entire city? Cause it wouldn't cost that much. We already have the community nodes, you know, DES set up. Additionally, uh, technology is rapidly changing and it's changed to the uh, uh, to the effect now that it wouldn't be that much. All it would take is some planning for the entire city. Uh, and he mentioned also uh, uh, in London and other places over there, England. Uh, uh, and abroad, they say they've already got uh those systems in place. So he said there's only like seven wars, one, two, three, four, five, six and seven. If you plan, you can have it at all. Cause we don't want, uh, we want something to happen. However, we do not want to be targeted. And if everybody, this is an entire community and we want the entire community to be safe. Um, there was something else I have here. Um, uh, I, what Mr. Josh King was talking about. Um, uh, uh, I, 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 I agree and other people with first followers. Those are the kind of people uh, in organization that, that's been trusted and tried and trusted in this community. And we have others. Seemingly, we should be able to get together. And I, I was reading the paper the other day where I, I think it was Jim, no, it was the editorial. This county got all this forty million. They don't know what to do with it. They wanna maybe add on to the jails. I read the article. We got people here who can get uh, uh, funding to go to school, to get on the rut and help these families.
Reverend Underwood, we're at your time. Thank you for your.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we had James Corbin, if you wanted to try again.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I was saying hello then, but it kinda, it wouldn't unmute, so I apologize. I don't know if it was on my side or you, your side. I don't know. But uh, yeah, I, I'm James Tiger Corbin. I work with uh first followers. I am a Urbana resident and uh homeowner here. And uh, I just wanted to just talk a little bit about the increasing violence that we are now witnessing across the country as well as in our own city. And uh, what uh, what, what seems to be some of the things that is uh, you know, that is attributed to that? So we're looking at a combination of, you know, young guys with military-style weaponry on the streets now. I mean, one hundred round clips and uh, and then we dealing with adolescents thinking along with testosterone. And due to COVID, everything, you know, a lot of things was closed, these type of programs that we run such as Go Mad, which work with really getting the, the young man together so they can, you know, go move forward. That type of mental training and life skills building, those programs have been shut down due to COVID. And, and now we seeing this increase all over the city, you know? Every city right now is seeing this, uh, Chicago, uh, uh, you know, Atlanta, everywhere. So wh- what we're proposing is this one-stop shop model that we feel would enhance Urbana. If we could get this here in Urbana and get this right, uh, I think we could become a model city that can be, you know, used as a way to deter this crime wave that we seeing happen simultaneously all throughout the city. What we're looking for, you know, in this one-stop shop would be a coordinated care system, uh, emergency displacement, funding for housing insecurity, job training, uh, as well as funding for coordinated mental health wraparound services. Support for family and children above age six, community mental health workers, incentives, affordable housing for human service providers, as well as outreach specialists such as Josh and myself who go out in these communities and talk to these young men and, and bring them back uh, the type of services that they need. This, that's just a few of them, but like you said, we working with, we wanna work with all the groups, bring all the groups together instead of all the groups being separated. So we don't have to um, you know, every, everyone copy or doing different things or doing the same thing, same service in that way, then we could lessen it, be more effective and be more cost efficient. Now, with that being said, uh, as a law, I, I used to live in Chicago and, you know, I hear this push for cameras. That's, I think that's great. This is gonna take collective effort on everybody part, but for uh, really, I, I, the cameras don't never stop nothing. You know, we just seen few people downtown Chicago is getting shot up. The woman just got stabbed. It sounds good, but I was, I would really suggest that people do their homework and investigate a little bit more. And you'll find that some of the cities are actually shutting down that. So that's okay, but that's a reactive solution. We need a proactive solution, a reactive solution. We already have police for reactive solutions. And um, the camera's only good if they could see. Most of the area in Urbana and Champaign is dark. So, you know, with that being, with that point, we, we need to focus on a proactive solution now so that we're not overworking our reactive set that we already have such as the police. And then we could work together as a community and bring this thing to an end. That's all I like to say on it and I thank you all for listening to me. I thank you mayor and council members for listening to me and have a nice day.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn. I'm from Champaign. And I just wanted to, first of all, just second everything that James Corbin just said. Um, you know, I understand the want for cameras, the security people might feel that they provide. But when it's tested out in the field, it just doesn't give the results that would equate to actually increasing safety, um, at least as evidence shows and as anecdotes show. So putting our funds into proactive solutions, basically just everything that James just said. Second that, uh, amazingly well said. And then another thing that I wanted to touch on was, you know, at some point, you're probably going to be going to in-person meetings again, much like the city of Champaign has. And uh, I would like for, just to put out there that the city of Champaign, uh, multiple times, multiple people have come and said that in-person meetings is less accessible, uh, more inconvenient. And it really dampens the amount of public comment that you can garner. And, you know, being a city, you want to reflect as much of the city as you can. And there's rural citizens, there are citizens without great uh access to public transportation. There are citizens with chronic illnesses and citizens who, for a myriad of reasons, the Zoom works better. And there are multiple municipalities across the state who have hybrid meeting models where they allow in-person comment because not everybody's techno, you know, able to keep up with the technology. So the in-person meeting is important, but also allowing the Zoom meetings, which just, you know, we shouldn't be taking any steps backwards after this pandemic. Um, we should just be opening and widening accessibility as much as we can. So please don't do what Champaign did and go to in-person only. Uh, please adopt a hybrid model that allows for Zoom comments or some kind of virtual comments as well as in-person comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Dee Hazen. You would state your name?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Dean Hazen and I live at three oh six North Berenger Circle. I sent you a, a letter today along with a petition where I have collected over nine hundred signatures. I trust that you all have received it. Uh, I hope I have enough time to read my letter aloud. I'd like to read it so that everyone can hear it. Uh, because I believe that these things just need to be said. It's just the raw truth. I'm sorry that it's not polished and I'm sorry that it's not politically correct. But it's just the raw truth and the community uh of Urbana needs to hear this. I'm gonna read you my letter verbatim. My name is Dean Hazen and I live at uh three oh six North Berenger Circle. We have lived, shopped, recreated and worked in Urbana since two thousand one. I have owned a business that generated a considerable amount of sales tax for Urbana. And we have owned two homes in Urbana. Both of my children have attended public schools in Urbana. I've served the city as a patrol officer for fifteen years. And as you all know, I also served on the city council for just short of three years. We pay nearly eight thousand dollars a year in property taxes and we continue to spend as much of our money as possible within Urbana. I am writing about the reappointment of the Urbana Police Command Staff. I will get right to the point. Anyone engaged in the community knows that certain council members are being pressured to target Lieutenant Coker and the Assistant Chief of Police, Richard Searls, and we all know why. Lieutenant Coker was unfortunate enough to respond to the Aliyah Lewis incident, a dynamic, a dynamic and violent situation involving a shot that was fired through an innocent person's apartment. I have watched the video of that arrest several times. And the police officers, including Coker, really couldn't have handled it any better. The only person injured in that arrest was a police officer. If you think that saying, quote, act like a lady, quote, is reason to fire or even criticize Coker, then clearly you have never dealt with violent situations before, before. Identifying that comment as sexist has got, has got to be the most pathetic act of desperation and political correctness that I have ever heard of. People are also aware of the video received through FOIA of Coker speaking with his coworkers privately after an unpleasant encounter with a man that was trying to intimidate them while they were doing their jobs. Again, what a sad, sad act of desperation. I'm gonna ask this question. How would you like to wear a camera for twelve to sixteen hours a day while responding to situations that would give most people nightmares and then be afraid to have a frank conversation with a coworker? It's called venting and it's necessary for humans to do this in order to put their professional faces back on and go back to, into a work mode again in the public. Do you think that doctors, nurses, psychologists or anyone else that's human doesn't do this in order to cope? I'm here to tell you that I have worked with Cory for fifteen years. I've been in all kinds of dynamic and dangerous situations with Cory, including knock-down, drag-out fights. He is an upstanding officer who truly cares about Urbana. He is not a violent or racist person. He is not a, he is not a heavy-handed cop. He is an excellent officer and he should be recognized for his outstanding performance in the Aliyah Lewis situation, not criticized. We are uh, we are all aware that you are being pressured to take out Lieutenant Assistant Chief Searls because certain people don't like the way he presented a situation at the Citizens Review Board. Again, this is ridiculous. Just like Coker, I worked with Searls for fifteen years and he is an excellent command staff officer. To the best of my knowledge, the people driving this garbage campaign against the Urbana Police is Tracy Chong and Chris Hanson and a few others to a lesser extent. They have not yet found a sliver of political correctness to use against Lieutenant Bain, Norton or Smizer. But as these uh three dedicated officers deal with the most possible, the, the worst possible situations in our society, I'm sure one of them will eventually say something uh, or breathe wrong and that will be twisted into a perverted version of the truth and used against them. For the record, I served for fifteen years with Smizer, Bain and Norton and you simply can't ask for better officers. The fact that these officers were not reaffirmed for another year has already caused severe damage to the Urbana Police Department as a whole. The officers at UPD responded to calls for service that would make most people sick.
Thank you. You are at time. Um, we next have Bo David Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, I kinda wanted to speak on one thing tonight. First, I wanna start off with, um, don't use Aliyah Lewis's name to further your propaganda. Um, leave her out of this. Let her live her life. She's been through enough trauma as it is. I don't need no replacement cop or whatever it was, wherever you are, I don't even know who you are, to just use her name. Make your points and be done with it. Um, I wanna speak on cameras, cause I can understand that people want more security. And people living in Urbana, I live out in the countryside, so I understand. I'm just coming from a place where I'm not as immediate direct threat. But I'm in Urbana, I'm in Champaign. I'm gonna be moving to Champaign at some point. Um, for the fall semester, like, it's, I just, I wanna say that people, people have a right, you know, to act as, you know, I can understand people's fears. And there's something that needs to be done because th- these people shouldn't have to live in fear. People in Urbana shouldn't have to worry about getting shot. It's, and you know, we shouldn't have to worry about when, you know, when is an officer gonna be shot? We shouldn't have a situation like that pop, we, we shouldn't have a, a situation like that come up. Nobody should die. Um, and before this, I, I, I did a literature review on the last two days. I'm a PhD student, so I read a lot. Um, cameras are hit and miss. Um, I went across like twelve different studies talking about how basically cameras work in crime reduction at the most maybe fifteen percent. Hell, even some places got twenty percent. Majority of those reductions in crimes was property theft and auto theft. Homicides, next to nothing. Um, this was done in Chicago, Washington DC, Philadelphia, Baltimore, Seattle, San Diego, or not San Diego, San Francisco. Um, and the problem is, is that although maybe helps with preventing some crime, it's not gonna solve the problem. Like James Tiger Corbin mentioned a minute ago, like a minute ago, he said, you know, it's, it's a reactive, uh, it's a reactive thing to do. And the problem is not addressing the root causes. Put up cameras, put up cameras everywhere, put them up in front of your houses even. And you're still not gonna see, you're, you're gonna see like this, only the smallest reduction in crime. Um, I'll try and send, send y'all like a more well-written thing after this. Um, but like, it, it's, what, what you need to do is invest in community programs. And I know certain people come up on here before talking about how they have six thousand people voters they've talked to that agree with them, even though they didn't win the Parks Com- Parks uh Commission election and only got like one thousand two hundred sixty votes. So where them six thousand folks at? I don't know. Um, but just the large contributor for crime, one of them is community wellness and well, and living conditions. Low po- low wages, just poor living conditions, poor access to healthcare, stuff like that turns people to violent crime, turns them out onto the street, turns them to do things that you, that you and many of the people, and many of the people probably listening would not wanna do. I don't envy the position of police. It's a very stressful job. I can't imagine doing it. At the same time, we've seen policies over the course of this, uh, over this course of this country, there's like several decades. I, I feel like I can read all these studies and academics that include community input and police officer input that shows that this kinda stuff doesn't work with just throwing up cameras and expecting that's gonna be the solution. You need to invest in community programs. Community programs such as stuff in Seattle, uh, included in the email that I send later, but they did a study in Seattle um, in twenty eighteen that they showed that there was, if you just invested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a community, it reduced crime by fifteen percent compared to ones that did not have those resources allocated to them for the some, communities of similar demographics and finances. This is why programs like SWIFT, the, the support for workforce training program is important to invest money in. I know you're probably not gonna invest in it like right now, but you gotta do something, cause programs like that, that give training to people to get into better paying jobs, um, like trucking and construction and nursing and IT, that's what's gonna help reduce community violence.
Thank you. Uh, next, next we have Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi, I'm Tracy Chong. Um, last year, a record number of residents voiced their concerns to council. Um, hundred and forty-six residents took time to speak or write to council and dozens more outside the city building protesting the reappointment of Chief Seraphin. Um, many of these residents, they called for Chief Seraphin not to be reappointed or for his re, his appointment to be delayed until um, a more thorough, transparent investigation into the assault um by UPD officers was performed. Um, the residents, we also voiced how um, it would be an irresponsible thing and a further erosion of public trust for Seraphin to be reappointed. Um, at the same time, residents were concerned about the bigger picture and called for um, updated and safer police policies as well as police accountability. Um, Mayor Marlin, you vouched for Chief Seraphin and his character and called for us to give him a chance. Other council members supported, some council members supported the. Other council members supported, some council members supported the appointment of Seraphin and tried to assure the public that his appointment was at will and could be terminated at any time. But what we have seen is that events over the past year have proven that these are just meaningless words and promises. Because up to today, we have not had a fruitful conversation on all the excessive use of force and how we are going to prevent it. What we have seen are superficial efforts by the city and the police department and the Chief Seraphin's leadership to make it sound like there is change. But in reality, where are the promised updated, safer UPD policies that address excessive use of force? We still have a police department that does not want to acknowledge its officers misconduct. I mean, we have it on video that it is misconduct, but there's no accountability or acknowledgement. The police department does not want to investigate itself. So where are all these meaningful changes that the residents have asked for? How is it that under Seraphin's leadership, we have documented misconduct? UPD officers have acted rashly, dangerously. They do not use de-escalation. We've seen them use excessive force, lied on police reports. But there are no consequences to these actions. So yeah, more importantly, we have not seen any meaningful change when it comes to police officer accountability. For example, Deputy Chief Richard Sills. So this man has lied to CPR to suppress video evidence during taser reviews and made light of dangerous officer misconduct. Even something as dangerous as holding a taser and gun at the same time and running around. I don't see how it can get worse than that. So I also don't know how this is a perverted twist of my opinion. Just watch the meeting videos and make your own opinion. So, I don't know, I guess, let's look at the bigger picture though. What is more concerning is Mayor Marlin's stance on this reappointment issue. And I think it's pretty alarming, the level of her disrespect for the due process that is a safeguard for accountability. What Mayor Marlin is doing is exactly the kind of root problem that Urbana has been having. Not interested in holding city staff or UPD leadership, especially those who have clearly violated ordinances and not holding the people's, the people's needs and trust. Just not holding them accountable. So of course, for a number of years, this process has worked because you have a bunch of council members that just agree to everything Mayor Marlin says. But once we have council members that are actually voted by the public to make the change, all this due process seems to be, there seems to be an effort to shut it down. So I think you guys, council members, are doing the right thing by questioning what's being proposed. Thank you.
Next, we have Brandy McCoy.
Hi, my name is Brandy McCoy. I'm Urbana resident. I just want to express my disappointment that we haven't heard more from the council on the SWIFT program and the opportunity to match a million dollars to invest in the futures of young students in our area alongside the continued insistence to invest in reactive approaches to crime like cameras and police, like everyone's been talking about. Just those two things side by side just really, really rubbed me the wrong way. I just wanted to express my disappointment. That's all I've got tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have, it's just listed as T-Mork, so if you would state your name.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, could I ask, I've got a prepared statement that runs about 15 seconds long. Can I get a short indulgence?
You have four minutes to speak, but we just asked that you state your name so we know who's talking.
Dan Morgan.
The time is yours.
My name is Dan Morgan. I live in St. Joseph, Illinois. I worked for the city of Urbana as a police officer for 26 years. I am a member of the CU community. I do business in Urbana on a daily basis. I recognize that neither Urbana, Champaign, nor the close surrounded communities are entities unto themselves. We are a single community in most ways. I have worked with, over and under, all of the outstanding people that are an ostensible point of contention at this time with the police department. But before I address them specifically, I want to talk about two other people. It is common for people to seek points of contention and their pride to pin their hopes on, in this case, who want to address the contention. A young woman who seems adrift in life makes a series of bad choices, both about who creates, what creates pleasure, and with whom to associate. In this case, someone illegally armed with a gun that he chooses to fire randomly into other people's homes. She fights with the police officers responding to the shooting. For some reason, it mystifies and angers some observers that fighting is not like a sequence from a Kung-Fu movie and it instead is ugly and complicated. Much screeching occurs and people must be fired. The young woman is revered as an icon of the abuses and struggles that have occurred through the ages. Rallies are held and dozens of people pledge fealty to her in the fight against injustices that have brought her to the point of persecution. Then something happens. The icon, perhaps in self-actualized recognition of having made errors, shows up in court with no one cheering her on to plead guilty. She stopped being the tool of other people's agendas and was cast out alone again. My hope is that the people that demand rightfully that we have a system that envelops people like her in long-term help and support are now part of that longer, slower, and uncertain process. Undaunted, however, there be dragons to slay and we must fire people and change the structure that led to this situation regardless of information. The targets have thus been identified. There's another person that I suspect none of you know and likely only have a passing, if any, knowledge of. That's Officer Ray Rich of the Urbana Police Department. About a week and a half ago, he was parked very late at night on a residential street in North Urbana watching a house that had the week before been the scene of yet another shooting and murder in our community. He was there out of concern for retaliation against residents, another common theme. He saw a vehicle approach and an occupant fired several shots at the house and then fled with Officer Rich now in pursuit. At very high speeds and at the far reaches of town, the vehicle crashed and the suspect was arrested and a gun was recovered. And by the way, the murder was originally responded to not by UPD but by the sheriff's office because your police department did not have enough officers on duty to deal with it at that moment. The previous iteration of this August body expressed great concern and disappointment that there were not enough complaints being made against you police officers, creating a sentimental wave that some of you rode into your current positions. Hearings were held and investigations undertaken. But there never seemed to, but something never seemed to seep in the process then or now. Like, what do I know on a personal level about the people that I seek to denigrate? Or maybe, hey, they aren't awful people. If I still had my notes from Psych 101, I would probably be reminded that none of the basic tenants of dealing with other people, one of the basic tenants of dealing with other people. If you denigrate them on a regular basis, make them unimportant, pay no heed to anything well-done, and only give or seek negative input from everyone around them, you will create the opposite of anything you think you are seeking.
Thank you. We are at time. Next person is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi, can you hear me clear?
Yes.
Good. I hope you're well today. Hope all is in order as it would be. I've been sitting here and surely I came here to talk to you all about the price of inequity. And so, I'm not sure if you are well-versed with what the price of inequity is. I'm sure you've heard of what the price of freedom is. The armed forces tell you all the time. A very popular social justice icon made a famous quote that said, "The price of freedom is death." I would argue to add that the price inequity is also death. That said, if you're either fighting for freedom or if you're not and you're just struggling, the only promise that you have is death. I don't know about you, but I want to live. That is the thing. We cannot dehumanize people, no matter where they come from, because we don't know who they're supposed to be. There was a man that was a druggie in my hometown. And his name was Detroit Red. And one day, that druggie turned into Malcolm X. So I do not underestimate anyone from any beginnings because that never mattered. And people are human. We should treat people as such. The inequities in our community are the number one killer of us all. It killed both that young man and that officer that night. That's what did it. Let's not mince words. We have a golden opportunity in front of us. Last year, we had choices and we chose all collectively to stick to our guns and stay at each other's necks while these inequities grew under COVID. Now, as it bears its fruit across the country where homicides are up over double, we have no more choices. Now, we have to band together now. No matter if you like each other or not, regardless if you're left, right, Democrat, Republican, pro-police or anti, we don't have a choice now. So, will we solve this tomorrow? We will not. Will we solve this next week? We will not. Next month, we will not. But what we can do is start to provide the very framework that will see community violence drop upwards to 65% if all things are supplied as they should be. The SWIFT program, right now, is only seeing in its pilot year about 50 folks. 50. Out of a million dollars of funding, we can triple the amount of people into this program, you will see crime drop. If you invest in, into the communities as far as streetlights, you will see crime drop. You will see police go into areas where they won't be in so much danger because of having streetlights there. So you have proper lighting, so you can engage folks in a matter where you don't feel that you need to enter fight or flight mode off-grid. Let's not get back into regressive policies. Cameras will not help us here. We will see it, but that is it. But we need to stop it at its source. No more regressive policy. I love humans. Don't you? I want to live and you deserve to.
Thank you. You are at time. I want to note that we have now met the one hour allotted for public comment. I believe we would have to vote to extend it if we are going to call on any of the remaining hands.
Motion to extend.
Is there for a specific amount or to, I guess, can you be a little bit more specific?
I was, sorry, yeah, I was trying to think about that. I don't remember what the new rules are, if there's a maximum cap. Or if it's up to us, I'd say another like 30 minutes at least, another hour.
I have quite a few hands still raised.
And another hour.
We need to have a majority vote to extend. Is there a second to extend public comment by one hour?
A second.
Is there any discussion? Mary Alice, yeah?
I'd be willing to vote for 30 minutes, but we have a pretty long agenda. So I guess I would say I wouldn't vote for an hour, but I would extend it to 30 minutes.
Grace, would you consider amending your recommendation?
About 45. We split the difference. I agree, it's a long meeting, but starting at six also, and there are a lot of people who want to speak that I would like to hear from, as many or all of them if possible.
I can live with 45 minutes.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Is there any further discussion? Besides James, you had your hand up. All right, we will return to public comments then. The next.
We need a vote.
Can we have a, can the clerk please call the roll? Thanks, James.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next person we had on our list is Nick Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name is Nick Brown. I live in Champaign and go to grad school here. I'm mostly here to, or pretty much Charlie here to talk in reference to the SWIFT program. Pretty much echoing what Eddie Pratt Jr. said. Just, this is a big part of ending community violence is investing in these types of workforce programs. It's not a silver bullet. It won't end everything overnight. But studies have shown that this is really the only way to dig out of the kind of situation that we're in. And so, yeah, just wanted to throw my support behind the SWIFT program and say that we need preventive and people-first measures to address community needs, not the kind of regressive, more money to the police department, putting up cameras, locking more people up. That might like feel good for a second and it gives you someone to blame. People really like to find individuals, reason to blame people. But long-term, if we want to stop the violence, we need community programs and SWIFT is an all of that. But it's a big part, especially if we can triple the number of people getting good jobs every year out of this. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Minnie Pearson. Did you decide you wanted to speak?
My hand, it was lowered, but let me say this. Let me go ahead and reiterate this. The gun violence is a community issue. Jobs is fine. Resources and getting the jobs and the information out to the community has not always benefited the black community because it's been kept from the black community, basically. They are advertising on places and stations where the black community does not have access to. This is a community problem that's going to take everyone. We cannot police ourselves out of this. We cannot spin ourselves out of this. It's going to take a structural change in the way things are done. A systemic racism. We have to not only do that, but we have to change the way people are thinking. It is easy to blame a few people who are shooting us in segments of our, our community and county. But until this community as a whole, including the city council, local governments, and everyone come together to work on this, come up with solutions and not, as I said in the news that weeks ago, move in furniture around and making it look as if it's changed. There needs to be systemic change in order to stop this gun violence. We can see what Colbert did to us, the loss of jobs, the loss of resources, the healthcare system failing us. But there are also much more than that. There are segments of this community that needs really, really attention yesterday and they have not gotten that. Garden heels is neglected. We need to look at all segments of our community and understand that we all, if you want to get rid of this gun violence, it's going to take an entire community. The schools, the churches, the different organizations. And no one organization or group of people can stop this. You, it, okay, I mean, I'm stopped right there, right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Blanco.
Looks like that hand may have gone down. Um, just double checking, Sarah still wanted to speak. All right, well, we will move on. Next we have.
I'm sorry, uh, her hand did come back up, so I'm going to mute her.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Um, having trouble with my mic. Um, so, um, the people of Urbana have been demanding, um, greater police accountability for a very long time now. Um, thousands attended protests against police violence last summer. The Champagne County Anti-Racist Coalition developed a list of demands that includes community control of the police. And I myself remember standing outside the city building last year with dozens of community members as the previous council um, ignored calls to remove the police chief after Urbana, the Urbana Police's violence against Aliyah Lewis. While this is nowhere near enough, um, the appointment of the police chief being subject to approval by city council puts a check on the police's power that would otherwise not exist. Um, the police chief needs to convince four out of seven city council members that he should get to keep his job, not just one person. Um, my understanding, the city council is supposed to vote on this tonight. Um, and I hope that this city council will make the right, right decision and when the, this vote takes place next week and vote to remove Seraphin. Um, to stop this vote from happening altogether would be seriously undemocratic, and I sincerely hope that this is not what the mayor is attempting to do. Um, I'd like to also reiterate what others have, um, had to say about the SWIFT program. Um, I agree that we definitely, um, need to be investing in education, um, and, um, in order to give community members the tools they need to thrive and not in overpolicing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Alan Max Axelrod.
Ah ha. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Could you put the clock up, please? Excellent. So I'm going to start this off with a statement that I have very rarely made, and I think that this should recognize the severity of the times. I agree with Minnie Pearson. Uh, one of the things that she had said in particular was that Garden Hills needs a lot of support. This is something that we have been advocating for, not just in public comment, but in somewhat clandestine measures. I'm speaking in behalf, uh, sorry, I'm speaking in my capacity, of course, as the, a co-chair of the Champagne Urbana Democratic Socialists of America. And one of the things that we are talking to representatives about when we talk about the SWIFT program is not only the appropriation of the funds, but also relocating some of the information sessions, some of the onboarding sessions into the vulnerable communities such as Garden Hills. We are in agreement that this requires more than one program, more than one organization, and more than one unit of government's money. I'm talking to the city of Urbana today to basically shift our demands slightly because we have been talking to you independently from the city of Champaign. We know that these cities operate in tandem. We would like for you to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Champaign, and the support seems to be there whereby the city of Champaign helps fund in part something called the Richmond Model, which has been shown to work, which helps stabilize the living conditions of vulnerable people who are at risk of actually being in violent crime circumstances. And with the city of Urbana providing the supplementation to the SWIFT program so that the Richmond Model participants can access those good paying jobs at the end of the year while also having stipends. This is how you disrupt systemic issues. I urge the city of Urbana to recognize that. On an individual level, I have also liaised for black and brown students in addition to protests between the protesters and the police. In fact, I've even had one night on October of twenty nineteen, if I remember, where both the police and the radical left protesters thanked me in the same night. And so what I want to talk about in that context is, of course, a lot of the language that's used because there's a difference between when I was liaising with the graduate employees organization and the University of Illinois Police Department and the language that they chose to use when they knew that the focus was on them. And the language that many people have been subjected to tonight that I have seen when we were in small hallways with black and brown community members being faced by the police with the derogatory behavior, recorded, by the way, that these folks have done. We know that they are neighbors and the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So what I'm saying in this context is, look at the language that's used. Look at the extent to which you believe or not it to be good faith behavior. Look at the subversion of democratic processes that are being sought towards in those sort of condescending uh, tropes that I've been subject to. Again, I've been thanked by the police for the kinds of work that I have done. It's not pure animosity. There is nuance to this issue. So that is why when we have comments by, for example, a former city council person who's animus-inspired four hundred forty-four people to leave that bubble completely blank, which most people don't even know that they can do, that I ask you to take it with a grain of salt. And then I also say that Grace Wilkins is a very, very, very big improvement in that city council, um, seat. Um, lastly, of course, I want to say that we have had over two hundred utility shut offs in Urbana, and the utility corporations are not, uh, providing the shut off notices to the Public Health District. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Benjamin Stone.
Hello. Uh, this is Benjamin Stone. Uh, I am a resident of the city of Urbana. I live with my partner, Nadiy Robat. Anybody who, uh, is listening in particular, my pronouns are they and them. Just dropping that out there in case anybody in particular needs to hear. Anyway, I'm actually going to vaguely be a voice of reason, which is slightly peculiar. Um, but I'm going to be kind of sensible about something. Uh, so I was looking through this list of mayor appointments, uh, that are going on, that are being rejected. Uh, and, and the ones the mayor decided, oh, of course, let's take a few away. Uh, I'm going to be really sensible here. Instead of taking away the people that she did who have some high accountability and literally get to carry a firearm, perhaps we could get rid of having to pass, like, once again, all the time, the IT manager appointment, who, incidentally, doesn't get to carry a gun to work. Perhaps we could pass on having to reappoint the deputy finance director, make them civil service. After all, they don't carry a gun to work. Perhaps we can even drop some of the fire people, because honestly, I trust them a little bit more to, if you will, police themselves. I feel like there are a lot of names that could be trimmed from here, and I feel like the only names that were trimmed are those that people tend to have public input on. Uh, and I believe that when quoted about this, the response given for why these were, were removed was the quote found in the news gazette, "It's my prerogative." Good Lord, if that doesn't sound like a child answering, a, a, a child's question of why with, because I said so. You know what? We're not children. We're adults, some forty-four years old. I pay my taxes, blah, blah, adult stuff. We are the voters. We are the people that you are responsible for and to. So when we ask for you to explain something related to somebody that the city has hired, who carries a gun to work every day, maybe answer our questions. Maybe don't remove those so that we literally have no input on it. It's not unknown to everybody how close you are with the police in this town. It's not a secret. So removing accountability, it makes you look even worse. Like, just look at this from a sensible point of view. Take a few names off. Go for it. Remove some appointments for us. But when you hear literal elected officials say, I have a problem with this, and then you remove the names, that's flat-out anti-democratic. That's dictatorial horse nonsense. I corrected myself quickly. Quick reminder, though, I have Tourette's. If I swear, don't you cut me off, please. Anyway, the moral is, you took an easy cop out by removing those names. It was pure cowardice. It was shameful. It was embarrassing, and it was childlike. Pull the frickin' IT manager off there and have some maybe accountability restored. I mean, Barbie it for me to make sense. Blah, 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 blah.
Um, next we have Jessica McClellan.
Hi, I'm Jessica McClellan. My husband is an Urbana police officer, and I am a mental health professional slash social worker that treats members of the community. I know that Police Command is voted on every year, but I also know that this year is different. Aliyah Lewis's name will continue to come up as long as city leadership continues to look for someone to punish. That situation was investigated three different times, and each time the officers involved were found to not be at fault. She injured an officer so badly last year during that event that they're still injured and unable to work. You are taking wrongdoings from other cities across America and pinning on, pinning them on our officers. We already know what happens when the violent crime rate drops due to our city's leadership not supporting their officers. If you don't start supporting your own officers, the city is going to run out of guardians. Our officers don't get to choose what horrors they have to face on any given day, but they will and have died for your city vote and your choices. We, the people, can only hope you choose and vote adequately. Any member of this community that thinks they can do it better is welcome to go on a ride along, let alone apply for the job. This is not a systemic issue any more than it's leadership issue. You're the leadership. Fix it.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Becky Rowe.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name is Becky Rowe, and for twenty years I managed a large residence hall in the city of Urbana. And in addition to that position, I also volunteer with a, a group called the Emergency Services Support Team. We respond to, um, calls where people have passed away typically in their home, and we also respond with the fire department to provide supportive services to families as they are transitioning from a fire ground, if they've had a fire, to, uh, supportive resources. In the course of those, uh, and just as a side note, I also have my MSW and, um, recently graduated from the University of Illinois uh, graduate program in social work. And I agree that we definitely need a united response, and we definitely need programming. The city of Urbana is a beautiful place because of its diversity. However, I felt that I needed to come to this meeting today to express my support for the command staff that is in question. And primarily because of the last minute knee-jerk response, um, that seems to be occurring. It did seem that, um, there are some who have recently come to the city council who are learning, and there's always a learning career curve. I know, um, I served on the Fire and Police Commission in, in Champaign for three years, and there was a little bit of a learning curve on that small, tiny commission. And I can imagine that the same exists for the city council. So I would ask that you please, um, move forward with the reappointment of your command staff and then put forth your plan for the city. Because what you, the actions that you take in removing the leadership and the institutional knowledge for this police department will have a ripple effect across the community. And this is a time when we need to look at ways that we can augment the police department, bringing in social workers, uh, helping our officers and offload some of the increased responsibility that we've asked them to take on through the years. And I believe that with proper planning and proper governmental responsibility that this can be done in a more positive way and in a way that will not cause a, a wider rift in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Serenity. Okay, sorry. This thing just set off. You still there? Serenity, can you hear us?
Can you hear me at all?
I can hear you now. There is an echo, but we can hear you.
Sorry. Um, so I'm fifteen years old, and I have a friend that was killed by gunshot, you know? Like, there was a drive-by, people were shooting and stuff, and I think cameras are a good idea because going to programs and stuff isn't a good idea because, like, my age, I know my friends and everybody else that are, I don't even know anybody that's doing it, but I mean, like, like, I don't think they would just go to a program out of nowhere, like. And that's all I would say.
Thank you. Next we have Dennis Roberts.
Oh, yeah, unmute. Okay, there you go. Thanks. Um, I just thought I'd, uh, say that I really appreciate the, uh, energy of the new city council. Uh, I appreciate that there are a lot of, uh, challenges that are being discussed this evening. One of them being a concern about how the council uses its governance to review their appointments that are proposed by the mayor. You should know that as city council members, you have the right to do this kind of oversight review of any kind of appointment that comes to you. And I hope that you establish, perhaps for the future, clearer procedures for the appointment to committees and staff positions because obviously there's some concern about individual appointments. And it is appropriate to divide the question and determine individual merits if it's necessary in that context. On another topic, and perhaps a lighter topic, I want to let everybody know, if you haven't been aware, that today, the twenty-first of June in twenty twenty-one is the one hundred and eighty-eighth birthday of the founding of our city, Urbana. On the morning back in eighteen thirty-three, a committee that was sent out by the, the state of Illinois's legislature to locate the county seat of the newly established Champagne County, which was divided from Vermillion County in February of that year, met at the log cabin of Isaac and Sarah Bucy. And after a considerably interesting evening of discussion, negotiation, and perhaps even the imbibing of refreshments, in the morning, the committee walked out of the cabin where they stayed overnight and located a stake on a small rise of ground not far from that cabin, which is near the Big Grove, on the edge of the Big Grove, and also the edge of the Boneyard Creek, and placed that stake in the ground, locating the center square and the site of the new courthouse for the town of Urbana, which has yet to be established. Isaac and Sarah Bucy, their son Matthew, and Thompson R. Weber, early pioneers and landowners living on the south edge of the Grove, offered forty-three acres of their property to attain that purpose. And, well, the rest has been the history of Urbana. So however things stand today, there's a long history of production, prosperity, optimism, and hope that has created the town that we live in today. And so I just would like to share with everybody else, happy birthday, Urbana, and good luck to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Ron Koster. Apologize if I say your name wrong.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ron Kester. I live at twelve oh nine West Oregon Street in Urbana. Um, when we talk about the role of policing within municipal authority, we need to be cautious about how we express our affirmation. Yes, it's a job that requires a lot of training and expertise, not as much training and expertise as a social worker or a middle school teacher, but quite a bit. And yes, police officers risk bodily harm, not as much. And yes, police officers risk bodily harm, not as much risk as a trash hauler or a row crop farmer, but still risk. And true, police officers keep the peace, not as well as church leaders and community organizers, some of which we've heard earlier today, and conflict resolution specialists and substance abuse counselors and yoga instructors and meditation instructors and youth program coordinators and kindergarten teachers and personal therapists, but they're out there too. What distinguishes police officers among other professionals are the rates of chronic stress, burnout, and PTSD. In those respects, police officers are routinely near the top of the list. This is because being a modern police officer is a terrible job. It is depersonalized, object oriented, and duty bound. It routinely promotes intimidation, interrogation, and punishment. It focuses its attention on people at their worst, rarely at their best. As any experienced attorney will tell you, if you are in the presence of a police officer, then say as little as possible because what you say can never help you and might ruin your life. Imagine being a police officer interfacing with the public on a daily basis and knowing that legal advice is 100% accurate. When we identify bad jobs wherever we find them, I think we have a moral responsibility to admit they are bad jobs and then take steps to reduce society's need for those jobs. Yes, thank those who dig coal out of the ground and recycle electronic waste and pick fruit and vegetables for pennies on the dollar. But in the meantime, let's change our practices to reduce the human suffering associated with jobs like that. This includes policing. Is that even possible for policing? It's helpful to remember that the modern face of policing is a very recent phenomenon, from the 1980s mainly. That's when policing became centralized and militarized and the whole notion of community-based policing ceased being an organizing principle. It's no coincidence that the rise in policing as a centralized militarized authority came about at the same time as mass incarceration appeared as a concept of social engineering. Both were aimed at perpetuating historic injustice against people of color and the poor. I tend not to blame individual police officers for that. I do hold my political representatives accountable for reversing that trend. We should rely on the police as little as possible by reducing police budgets, reeling in our expectations of policing and transferring that authority to people in the community who represent who we want to become: teachers, community organizers, social workers, artists, and those who promote public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lena Andres Walker.
Hi, my name is Lena Walker. I'm an Urbana resident. And I just wanted to express my concern about the installation of CCTV cameras as a solution to violent crime in Urbana. A previous commenter had asked attendees at the meeting to imagine you know, what it's like to be constantly surveilled as an example of unreasonable demands being made on police. I don't have to imagine what it's like to be constantly surveilled at work because it's actually not an uncommon experience for many vulnerable and low wage workers. So this may be a new development for people who have historically enjoyed a significant amount of authority and autonomy, but for many of us, this is old and demoralizing news. For example, call center workers have their phones and computer screens monitored at all times. They're also monitored on the floor by supervisors to ensure that venting is not allowed to occur between employees. As a remote student, I've had my eye movements monitored during exams in the name of detering cheating, conditions under which it's very difficult to concentrate. So I wholeheartedly agree that constant surveillance is deleterious to humans' mental health and also just in general, our ability to build a life together. But we don't arrive at this point for no reason. Violence is a pressing issue and the loss of even one single life is profoundly damaging, not only for the loss of that person's life, but the life of everyone that they touched, including the person who commits that act of violence. I don't intend to dismiss the concerns and experience of those who advocate for street cameras. Increased surveillance often comes in response to legitimate problems at work or in public places, whether it's police violating civil rights or call center workers denying financial assistance based on someone's address or armed assault in a residential neighborhood. But what I really hope that people consider is this. The decision to utilize surveillance as a solution to a problem is essentially a tacit acknowledgement that we have found ourselves incapable of solving that problem. So I would urge the council and our community, as others have said, to recognize the underlying systemic issues that contribute to violence, not only here, but nationwide as a trend. And rather than throw up our hands and go for the best, worst option, let's tap into the vast amount of passion, civic mindedness, radical imagination, and stellar dedication and loyalty that makes every ward and every neighborhood of the city worth investing in. And that kind of work is difficult and it is costly at times, but it is a real investment in the community, not just for the immediate, but also the long-term future. And organizations like First Followers, HVNT, CU Try, and others are out here doing the work. And we should really defer to their work and expertise and not just commit funds to more surveillance as a final solution. So thank you and happy summer solstice. And happy birthday, Urbana.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Stuckey.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Matt Stuckey. I'm from Mohammed. I want to address what the one gentleman has just called a couple of minutes ago and said about how police see people on their worst days, not their best. It's pretty ironic that he said that too because this society seems to go ahead and show police all the time that they're bad and not the good things. Just like Officer Overheim, nobody wants to tell the story about him being a coach or Officer Creel, who is very involved in his church and people look up to them as like dads. We got a real big problem in this community and in this country with dehumanizing the badge and realizing that there's people behind it. And until we can get to that point and realize that, we're going to keep continuing having issues. As far as the reappointment goes, I find it disgusting that there are certain people in this community and council that want to attack officers just because of the incident with Aliyah Lewis. They are getting singled out. These officers were proven to not have been in violation and Ms. Lewis pleaded guilty to resisting arrest and that's all I'm going to say about that. I give much respect to Mayor Marlin for being a true leader and saying she supports the police and that the actions of the council is ridiculous. It's finally good to see somebody who's leading a city step up in support of police and we're going to need more of that to be able to move on. We need more leaders like her and people on the council that aren't using their own agenda and try to use that to damage their community and department, which has already needed officers to protect this community. You guys keep talking about wanting to cut budgets and worried about the mental health and everything of officers. What do you think it's going to do to the officers that are going to stay? They can't provide and keep officers in in right now. You're going to cut the budget. That means the officers that are there are going to continue, you know, to be like working longer hours. That's going to do a lot to them. You guys need to really focus on what it is and what it is that you don't want to do. You need to support the police. You need to support this community. We need police to get rid of the criminals in this town, to decrease the shootings that are happening. The CCTV is a great way to go. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Michael Hendricks.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks, Champaign, Urbana resident, creative hidden homeboy, community engineer, educational policy major. Just want to say belated Juneteenth to the people and the allies. Let's keep our eyes focused on how the government may approve our holidays, yet trying to roll back to freedoms those we are fighting for, that we fought for, have celebrated. Happy Pride, everyone. It was a black truffle man that kicked off Pride. Make sure we know Pride was a riot, not a parade. I'm happy to announce that we have Pantry's coming to Urbana in collaboration with a few people in Urbana and the city. I'm appreciative of that. Since we are assessing the situation as a homeboy, I want to provide some facts before we start. I cannot compare a broken finger to a four man on one female takedown. However, I can provide some facts. 58% of Americans say policing needs major changes. 6% says nothing needs to be done. Almost all support is focused on increased accountability and community relations. Half of that is about police reducing and funding with large gaps in race, political parties as well. This is not a political issue. It's about a people's first approach. So we must keep focused on that. Once again, 58% of Americans agree that we must make changes in the policing for making it better for our community. Also, there's a research study by The American Progress that states 57% of Americans support replacing police officers with clinical solutions such as social workers, also with concentration on mental health solutions, also substance abuse, domestic disputes, and more for school solutions as well to deal with discipline in the community. Also, young Americans also say that they are eight out of 10 likely to support the facts for changing and reframing the sense that we use the police in our communities. So that means even young people are being affected by this as well in our community in these gaps. What we can do also is look into more studies about what we can do when it comes to the idea of this broad support for the police and the community. Require officers to have good relations with the community. Change management practices so that officers don't abuse or the powers and be punished for that. Change management practices so officers can have multiple incidents and then they're not allowed to then serve in those areas. Promote community-based alternatives such as violence interventions and more programs such as the Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant that's out right now that people can apply for. Those grants currently in Illinois, they are designed for reducing violent crimes, specifically for domestic violence and gun violence. We just can't come on here and start complaining. We did all that last year from Back to Blue and all these other initiatives. Start giving facts before we get on here. Yes, we're upset about stuff, but let's get some facts of solutions to the people. Also, from what I'm hearing is that people such as Matt Stuckey and other people, they want solutions for the police. They want solutions. We're asking them to have solutions. Let's get them those solutions because we need those too for our community. So if you hear that not only are we saying we need solutions to mental health in our community, they're reaching out saying that they're not mentally stable to take the capacity of helping our community. So let's be diligent and give those solutions to all aspects of the community. There is also a research study in Illinois that says that firefighters have the best community approach to solutions. So we need to make sure that they are talking about what the firefighters are doing to have police become better when it comes to being community people. Also, last thing, I'm going to finish with this. Cameras, are we using them to surveillance or are we seeking out assumptions or possible suspects? Overall, are we stereotyping communities and bodies? And I say that even while mentioning color. Good night.
Yeah, next we have Sarah Nixon.
This is Sarah Nixon, resident of Urbana and Champaign County. City Council, first CCTV cameras as a solution to gun violence in Urbana. Alderwoman Hersie represents that she has a petition signed by 403 residents in favor of installing surveillance cameras in Urbana's streets. However, I'd like to draw your attention to the actual language of the petition, which shows that it appears to have been worded carefully in such a way as to potentially mislead the reader or at the very least manipulate. The petition says that it is requesting, quote, urgent exclamation mark, stopping gun violence in the city of Urbana. And it calls for the installation of CCTV cameras, but that's just one of a list of aspects or things it's calling for: increased lighting, clear lines of sight, security personnel 24/7 to manage cameras, to be in place ASAP in the high crime areas of Urbana. So my concern is, we don't in fact know what Ms. Turnbull actually said to the people who signed in order to persuade them to sign. I'm sure you know that if you've ever signed or prepared a petition, you know that people on the street or people who are approached door to door do not always take the time to carefully read the content of the petition. So people usually rely on what is being presented by the person asking them to sign. In other words, was the petition presented as make the community safer, make the community safer campaign, an end gun violence now campaign, with the cameras invading your privacy buried as a footnote in the fine print? If so, we can easily understand how 403 people readily signed. Heck, I could get 400 more tomorrow if the petition is calling to end gun violence now. So before further turning our city streets into an Orwellian surveillance dystopia, I urge the city to look into, for example, the solution proposed this evening by Reverend Underwood, the ShotSpotter police gunshot detection technology used in Bloomington Normal. I had a chance to quickly Google it. I urge city leadership to do the same and take the time to investigate the potential application or adoption of that technology because there are many reasons to stop this panicked rush to violate privacy rights and install camera surveillance of citizens. And just one of them is the real risk of corrupt officers abusing that technology. Not many people may be aware that in 2005, an Urbana police officer Kurt Hort visited a convenience store gas station and acquired the name of a store clerk during conversation. Afterwards, he used the MetCAD dispatch system to obtain her home address and while on duty and in uniform, drove a squad car to her residence, walked into her home and using his authority for intimidation raped the female and commanded she not tell anybody. No news story was published until community members confronted the Urbana City Council with the information. No arrest was made, no criminal charges were ever filed, and this officer was allowed to retire and shortly after, found a new job. And to this day, he collects a pension from the city of Urbana. So that stands as a cautionary tale and an illustration of what can go wrong and how terribly it can go wrong. And I can tell you from personal experience, I have experienced wrongful invasion of privacy, invasive surveillance and intimidation by federal law enforcement. And it's not a stretch for me to perceive the risk of further violations committed by bad apples at the UPD. Just want to check my time, two seconds left. So I will continue next week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Rita Connerly.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Council. My name is Rita Connerly and I am a native to Champaign. As a Black and Latina mother who lives here, I am very concerned at some of the solutions proposed tonight. To have cameras to further target Black and Brown bodies, that is just unacceptable and I am appalled. We should look at our sister city, Bloomington Normal, at systems that they use to prevent an even lower gunshot violence in their community. The gunshot detection system, and I am so happy that Sarah Nixon reiterated that and I hope you guys are paying attention and looking it up. It enables a rapid and more precise response to policing. These are the systems that we need to look into to further, to further help contribute to the safety of our communities, not cameras, which are invading in people's privacy, but again, further targeting our Black and Brown communities. Additionally, we need to invest in programs such as SWIFT, which is an excellent program which shows our youth trades and gives them skills to further put themselves in a position of self-sufficiency additionally. And there is no but to that system. However, how is the city of Urbana supporting its victims? And when I say victims, I'm speaking of domestic violence, gun violence victims, the children who are also bystanders, innocent bystanders of victim of crimes, excuse me. How are we aiding to that? These are the, these are the times in which we need more mental and social emotional supports. As a survivor myself, I have attempted to utilize the resources available, courage, connection, and oftentimes knocked on a door which was unanswered because they were not receptive or able to provide me with support due to already being at its capacity. We've heard many of the speakers tonight talk about the changes that are needing in policing and more than 50% nationwide state that there needs to be a change. I want to applaud Ron Costa for calling in and speaking on the changes that are much needed in our community. Because as a white ally, his voice amplifies the Black and Brown voice. And it is unfortunate as such to hear a young 16-year-old call in tonight and feel the need of cameras in our community. We are conditioned to believe- Of cameras in our community. We are conditioned to believe that that is going to further provide safety. When we have seen cameras not only help, but also not contribute to further, furthering arrests. How can we expect cameras in communities when we have poor lighting? You have to have good lighting first in order to be able to see, to catch the criminals. So again, I am here in support of black and brown bodies. We need equity. And as Eddie Pratt mentioned, the only way to get freedom is death. And as, when it comes to equity, the only way to get it, it seemingly will be either through bloodshed or death. We need equity. We need programs. We need to incentivize volunteerism. I've heard many callers tonight call in from Mohammed, from Toluano. We have cops that are not even engaging with community members higher within your city. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are now at the, a lot of time for public comment and the last hand that was raised. So we will move on to council comment. There anyone who would like to speak? Trace?
Um, yes, okay. Um, and take the timer off of me because I'm gonna say what I gotta say. This is one of these things where, um.
Can I, can I interrupt a minute, Trace? I believe Trace was supposed to do a presentation following public input. We voted to move, uh, council comment to after public comment. Oh, directly after public comment. Okay, sorry. I thought it was after.
Okay, because Linda Turnbull and i- is going to be next after, after this and. She will bring her information and we will discuss that. Okay, uh, you know, I'm hearing a lot from input tonight and, and I, I do take in everything and I do listen. Um, but what I also notice is that I don't, I don't think that people. Realize how much monies we do contribute to, um, different. Programs within the city to help the city and we do do a lot of that. And, um. With all of, with all of the monies that we contribute that get, that people get. Um, we've not gotten any data back from any of these programs saying, uh, well, this is what. We accomplished and this is what we did and nothing in writing. And so it's kind of not fair to come up and just say cameras don't work because we don't know. What will happen here. And, uh, I'll also, no one was really talking about this issue. Before, uh, you know, it was brought up that maybe we need to have surveillance for. For different parts of the cities regarding the, uh, how the, the, um. The gun violence has gone up. And what many people don't realize, I think, is that this isn't new. You know, when I was a young girl, there were a lot of, uh, of gun violence. There was a gangs all through the city. Not as ruthless as they are now and, and not as, uh, uh, petty, I think, as they are now. Um, my father used to organize gang members down here in the basement of our, our house to have truces and such. To keep people from getting shot. But the other thing is that some of, some of these, this gang violence that's going on, of course, is. Not even on the north end, which is not, it doesn't happen so much in, in Urbana, but it bleeds into Urbana from Champagne. And where a lot of these shootings are happening, or there's an elementary school, there's a park, there is, uh, um. There's a, a housing project that have, has young children in it. And I think about what they have to suffer through. That's what I think about. Regarding the reason why we even thought about cameras, the reason why Linda even thought about it is because. So many people feel intimidated, uh, when the police come to ask them if their ring. Recorded anything that happened. They are, uh, they've gone to the point of maybe even identifying who did some shooting. And then get on the stand when it comes time to, to say, and, and they recant, re- recant their, their, uh. Their identification because they are intimidated. And right now we have a lot of babies shooting babies. So I'm not, it's not about surveilling the black community. It's not about surveilling black and brown. It is about just trying to identify who's doing what. And if in fact, if in fact. We find who that person is, if in fact we find who that person is. Then they can either, you know, the justice, I'm not gonna say the justice system because I know how the justice system works. But I will say that there is a, 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 at least options for us to either help them. Guide them, maybe incarcerate them. But we have a lot of babies shooting babies. And that's the only reason why we are even bringing this up.
And we will.
For that, I would like to say, um, Jay, I'm sorry, um, Linda Turnbull is here to discuss the petitions. That she's, um.
Have that on the agenda next.
Okay, so anybody else want to say anything?
There any other council comments? Grace?
Sorry, I'd like to let James go first if that's okay with you, James.
Absolutely. Miss that, James.
Thank you, Grace. Um, I did want to mention, um, that, uh, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. Uh, I, I think it's really important to have public input. I, I know it's a. A tough, um, question, uh, that people are engaged in and emotional about. Um, but it's important to hear all of your voices so that we can, uh, make our decisions. I do want to take a moment. Uh, to thank the city staff this week, um, or last week I was the benefit beneficiary. Of, uh, a number of, uh, orientation sessions, uh, getting to, uh, tour public works, getting a tour. Of, uh, several of our fire stations and, uh, working with the police and, uh, with community development and it was. It's very helpful to see the size and the scope of what it takes to run an entire city. All of the city. Um, it is, it is complex. There are a lot of people involved. Uh, and they are people and they're people that have chosen public service, uh, as their, as their work and. Um, there, I, I heard, uh, dehumanizing, uh, discussed several times tonight. From, from different perspectives and, and dehumanizing should never happen. Whether it be one of our sin- citizens being, uh, treated unfairly or improperly or whether it is. Someone, uh, treating an, a staff member as, as, uh. I don't want to, I don't know how to say this, but, but treating as a, a staff member as not a human trying to do a service for the community. So, um. I do appreciate what the staff did for us last week and hoping to educate us. I, I, I want to thank, um, everyone who's. Uh, put effort into helping, uh, the new members of this council try to get. As much information as possible to make, um, fairly weighty decisions in a short period of time and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grace.
Oops, there's clock. Sorry, thanks. Uh, I want to start off saying thank you to the public for your input and participation in our local government. I hear that people are concerned about community violence and community resources and that ultimately we all want to live in a safe and healthy community. Any loss of life or trauma is a tragedy to our community and the family and friends involved. I agree that we need to work together towards community safety. I will not dehumanize anyone, not as a hero or as a criminal. We're all human beings and we are all accountable for our own actions. There's been an increase in gun violence. And the community and we need to address that with multifaceted solutions that focus on prevention, healing and safety. I'm dedicated to working towards that and I support funds being allocated to a new model of wraparound services. And an accessible SWIFT program or something similar. On the topic of reappointments, we are still waiting on information about any individuals that are up for reappointment. I want to clarify that I have more respect for this position as a council member than to make uninformed decisions. I understand that this is an important and heavy decision and that's why I'm asking for information to make an informed decision. I will not make approv- approvals or rejections based on nothing or based on fear, anger or other emotions. We are trying to do our job as council members to represent the public and the people of our ward by making informed decisions to benefit the public. And hopefully that will also benefit the city. I think it's unprofessional and unproductive to start a panic and uproar with the public. Based on inaccurate and assumptive information. There is an opportunity here for the city to work with us as a new council or to demonize and divide us. I think that working together will be more productive, pleasant and beneficial to the city and the public. Asking for more information and to vote on reappointments individually is not putting their jobs in peril for absolutely no reason. As Dean Hazen states on his petition, I see it as doing our duty as council members that we swore to do to make informed decisions. I believe that making bundled decisions about reappointments based on zero information is reckless and irresponsible. I will continue to ask for the necessary information to do my best in this position and make informed decisions that are within the council's rights to make. The council is an independently elected branch of our government that serves an important role and one that I intend to protect. So that we can participate effectively in our local government as we are elected to do. I appreciate the public participation and I will continue to do my best to serve this public, to serve the public in this role as a council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments? Are there?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I've been listening to everybody's comments, uh, the public input and. Um, it's, it's fortuitous that several of the items that the public brought up are, are items that I think that we can cover in this. In this conversation tonight in the city council committee at the whole meeting. Um, we have something on, uh, the review of public safety. Which a lot of people talked about public safety. We have a presentation on cameras and lighting in Ward Three. Um, we also are going to be talking about capital improvement plans. Um, and if we're talking about lighting, that's part of capital improvement plans. Um, but to some other questions that aren't on the agenda for tonight, which has to do with the American Rescue Plan, I think I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. But we haven't, as a city council, had the conversation about how, um, the public and how the city thinks to best use those funds. And I think that that conversation will be in July or August, roughly speaking. Um, and so. So to that, I say that, you know, a lot of people have been coming and talking to us about SWIFT. Um, and I think that that can definitely be part of the conversation for SWIFT. Uh, several people have come and talked about, uh, gun violence prevention programs. Um, and that possibly could be part of that conversation as well. So I just wanted, wanted to lay out for everybody like where these conversations are gonna happen. Um, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Shandra, I believe I saw your hand up next.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, I'd like to start by saying happy birthday to Urbana. Thank you, former Alderman Dennis Roberts for pointing that out. Pointing that out to us. Um, I'd just like to take a few moments to address a few things. Um, first being the errant idea. That I personally am here to upend any stability within the Department of Public Safety. I was elected to represent the people of Ward Five and during my campaign, I spoke often about the, about challenging the status quo. And making sure we work toward a community that's equitable and safe for everyone. We should be welcoming this new era of public safety, one that's rooted in healing and care. Part of doing that is asking questions, reviewing reports and of course, listening to those who elected us. If there exists a lack of accountability within any police department, that has the potential to lead to the continuation of police, police tactics. That have long been known to be extremely dangerous for residents and particularly residents of color. Thankfully, we have not had any fatal incidents, but I believe accountability and change in culture within the department are the ways in which we can improve. And rebuild relations and trust between residents and police. I would also like to add that I do not appreciate misinterpretation of my words or the context in which I speak them. My quote from a recent article being new council members, we don't know the right questions to ask. Was only in self-reflection to the words of a mayor from the previous council meeting. In my limited time of council, I have expressed concerns about one employee and this employee is not a member of the police department. I also believe my cons- my concern about that particular employee has been addressed. I appreciate the mayor and the staff for answering all of our questions. I'll end with these two statements. I do not make it a practice to make an uninformed decision, so expect me to have questions and give genuine thought to items we're voting on. And lastly, we must continue to ensure the values that shape our city are the same ones reflected in city leadership.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is staff reports. There were no reports included in the agenda. Um, the, so the following item is a discussion. Um, we have one item on the agenda for discussion of review of public. Yes, excuse me. Hey, just a couple of announcements if I could. Absolutely. Um, first of all is that, uh, the council has been informed, but I wanted to let the public know that the city of Urbana plans to open. The city building, reopen the city building on July sixth. That's Tuesday, July sixth after the fourth of July holiday. Um, we'll be announcing the, um, hours, uh, in the coming week or so. And we will also return to in-person public meetings. That would be for the city council committee of the whole boards and commissions in the council chambers. And at the same time, we're also, uh, individual departments are transitioning, um, staff back. From remote working and actually working out new, um, schedules. Like, one thing we've learned from the pandemic is that. Remote working is, is a real, um, boon to people. It allows people to plan, you know, their, their schedules differently. It, it makes it much more flexible for those with families and other obligations. So we're, we're looking at how, um, the new normal is. In terms of remote working and plus service to the community. So, building opens, meetings, um, become in person. And, uh, staff will be transitioning back. You'll also see some changes in the council chambers. We're getting new seating, which is more flexible. It's actually easier to get in and out of, so it's more accessible in that way. We have new cameras, new monitors and new, um. Monitors both on the wall and on the dais. So I think we'll have a better, better service to the community in that way. And I also want to point out that later this summer, we will begin discussions about, um, allocation of the American Rescue Plan funding. So we have approximately six point five million dollars coming, but we in the city for this year. And as you know, in the budget, there's another two million dollars that set aside for infrastructure improvements. And we heard a lot this evening about, that relates to infrastructure, particularly lighting. So that is certainly something that, that. Um, uh, money that was set aside for infrastructure improvements in underserved areas could be used exactly for. And sorts of things people have been talking about tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Marlin. Um, so we will move on to presentations. We have one presentation on the agenda regarding cameras and Ward Three. Presented by Council Member Hersi.
Um, it could somebody please, uh, make Linda Turnbull, um. Uh, Jason, could you fix that so that she's, I don't see her?
I just promoted her to a panelist.
Okay.
I think she'll need to, uh, click that she accepts. It looks like she has, so she'll probably be joining here.
Okay. Um, Linda and I have, have talked several times regarding, um, the violence over here in the north end. Um, or I'm, the north side of Urbana. Um. I've, I've discussed several times even with different police officers with, with Chief Seraphin, with Richard, uh. With, uh, Deputy Chief Searls regarding, um, what can be done and long before COVID even started. This is something that we discussed. And in, in our discussions, our main concern is. Being able to hold the people who are, who are doing these shootings accountable and to find them and to hold them. But we also find that the issue, one of our issues is the intimidation that some of our residents. Are, um, subject to when they see something and they don't say anything. And this was just one of the, one of the, uh, uh. The solutions that we, that Lynn and I were discussing that maybe that is what we, we need because of the simple fact that. A lot of people don't come forward, even if they have information. And if they do come forward, uh, I've found, uh, I've been. Been told too how, you know, they end up recanting or not showing up for court cases. And that is not helpful and it's not, it does not help to keep anybody in our community more safe. Um, and this is not just about, um. Cameras from, from what I've read with the petition, because I did read the petition and I can read and I do. and I can read, and I do comprehend everything that I read. Um, is the, it, this is, it says, it, it specifically says, in the areas where there is a lot of gun violence, that doesn't necessarily mean the North End, because there's been a lot of gun violence off on, uh, on Fallow Road. There's been gun violence in other areas in, um, next to Scottwood, Scottswood. There are definitely other areas of the city that have gun violence other than the North End. So Linda, you wanna pick up on that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, first of all, I'm Linda Turnbull, and if you don't know me, I am the person that wears many hats in our city. I registered over 5,000 people to vote. I'm a substitute teacher. I'm a parent. I'm a commissioner for housing. I'm a liaison. I'm an activist, and I'm also a Christian. Right now, I'm coming to you about the petitions. I've sit here the whole night. I heard a lot of positive stuff, a lot of negative stuff. But what I take it as, being a Christian, is I don't get offended about negative or positive. We all have to come together to solve this. And if you're gonna be negative, you're not gonna be able to solve anything. Not only that, we're not trying to police our city. We're trying to keep our citizens safe. There are guns being shot with thirty and forty rounds. Those are, stray bullets could hit anyone. And right now, we are, we don't, the programs that we've been giving money to, or you guys have been giving money to, they're not working. They're not working. We gotta do something different here. Again, those programs have not been working. We need to do something different here. This is a safety issue. Hallelujah. Again, Rantul has cameras. Decatur has cameras. U of I have cameras. But Urbana-Champaign, we don't have them. And all the things I've heard with the petition, they read the petition just like she read the petition. They said, "Long overdue". It's not about privacy anymore. It's safety. Not only that, people are just, what, want something different here. It's not working. The programs are not working. I mean, are they working? Are they, are they working, the, the programs? Can somebody tell me they're working? So right now, what I'm looking at, we have to do something different. And if we don't do anything different, more lives are gonna be lost. And more people are scared or intimidated. Cameras are not afraid. They don't get intimidated. I was just at a shooting the other day. A young man lost his life. Saw the police go up to the neighbor's house, asked the neighbor, "What happened?" "I ain't talking to you. They ain't gonna come back and shoot me." Right there in front of everybody. Hallelujah. So right now, we have to do something. We, as citizens, have to protect ourselves and our loved ones. I know people have done a lot of great work, but it has not worked. Lot of good people have done a lot of great work, but it has not worked. We need something different. Again, Rantul have cameras. Decatur has cameras. U of I have cameras. But Urbana and Champagne, we don't have them. Hallelujah. There's a life being taken other, every other day or every day. People are getting shot. You don't know when one of those bullets is gonna hit you. You don't know what's gonna happen. So we need something to protect our citizens. We're not trying to police our city. We're trying to keep our citizens safe. Now again, I know Diane Marlin will do a great job, her and her board, making a decision where this money needs to go or what they need to do with this money, because study giving out money and it's not working. It's not working. Again, can I say it? It has not worked. It is not working. We need to do something different. Again, this is Ms. Turnbull. I'm not gonna here to talk negative about anybody. Everybody has been doing all they can do, but it's not working.
So what I would like to add to that is this. No one is trying to say that in place of anything, uh, any type of mentorship programs or anything, or anything like that, that that is what, well, we're trying to put cameras in place of. That is not, that is not what we're, what we're talking about. What we are talking about is that in concert with, and that is mainly to, um, to help people in our neighborhoods and in the neighborhoods that are affected by this gun violence feel safe about not ha, not having any retaliation against them, because people are afraid to speak up. And we can, you know, we can continue whatever mentorship programs there are. I'm, I am, am in hope that, that, you know, they do save one person. If they, they save one, that's good. If they change the path of two children, that is fine. But, um, when, when we don't have any, any type of data to go from regarding, uh, what is working and what is not. I know that first followers deals with, uh, men that were incarcerated and, and re-acclimating them to, uh, and get them, make them productive members of society, and I can appreciate that. I can. Um, some of these other programs I've not really heard of. Um, and if, if you are involved in those programs, shoot me an email. Um, send me some data. Send me something that, that I, I can, I can actually sit and go, wow, this is a good, this is good. This is, this works. And I would think that any, anybody on the council would appreciate that information as well. Um, this is just, and unfortunately, an additional thing that I, I feel that may be necessary, what Reverend, uh, Underwood talked about as far as the, the shot, the gunshot, um, the detector. Um, I know that hu, huge cities use those. But how often or how frequently do they actually catch the perpetrator or the person that may have killed someone? I don't know. And in all honesty, I don't know about cameras either. But I'm not, I'm also not shutting anything. I, my feeling is that all options are on the table. And
That's true. All options are on the table. The mayor and you guys, we trust you. We put you in place. And I'm pretty sure I helped a lot of people that's maybe sitting on that council get on the council. But my thing of it is, if it's not working, don't keep pumping money into something that's not working. Let's do something different. Hallelujah. I am not talking down on nobody. We need to do something different. It's not working. What you've been doing is, has not worked, and it's not working. If it's working, show me something that's been working. I just need to know what's been working.
That's what I'd like to know. Does anyone have any questions for Linda or myself?
Uh, Grace's hand first.
You, thanks for bringing up the idea, and, um, yeah, your signatures were a lot impressive. I was wondering if you had an estimated cost or idea of, um, where that money could come from?
The cost of the cameras?
Yes, of the cameras and the supporting services for them.
Okay, what I'm looking at is that the money, some money you guys are getting, and, but we're gonna have to do something else. And I, just like I went and did petitions, and I didn't charge any money, I wouldn't charge any money to raise money, 'cause if it's twenty-four, twenty-four, it would be through MetCap, twenty-four, twenty, watching like U of I. I'm, I got a master's degree in training and development, and I follow the best of the best. And right now, the best of the best I'm looking at is Rantul is doing it, Decatur is doing it. U of I has been doing it for a long time. So their process is MetCap. And I know for a long period of time, we would have to do fundraisers, and I'm good at that too. And I wouldn't charge a dime, and I wouldn't give, I'm not asking for any money. I just wanna keep our kids and our place safe. I'm not telling you throw a million dollars here, no money here. I wanna put in my time, and I'm volunteering. Hallelujah. And like I said, I don't do anything curricul. And like I said, I registered over 5,000 people to vote. I didn't tell them nothing crazy to vote, to sign up. I just do things a legal way. Hallelujah. I'm not here begging for money or asking for money. Get the cameras up. Let them give you data. Let you see who these people are with these guns. Just order these things off a line, shorten forty and fifty times. Hallelujah. And let's get these people off the streets. So the thing about the money cost is, you guys, as a board, would have to come up with, following the best of the best, seeing how much money that would cost. And then if the money you have that's coming in, we're covered for then, then, uh, just like the veterans raise money every year. I'm pretty sure we could raise money every year for something like this. Hallelujah. 'Cause I done raised it for other things that's not, it's more, more important than this, uh, somebody's life. A life is important. Hallelujah. You can't get that back. I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, you're pumping all this money into programs and programs, but they're not working. Hallelujah.
And the other thing that I would like to say is that it seems, it seems that there is, is a type of infrastructure that's kind of already in place. And if, if not, you know, one of the things that we could do as well is, um, you know, use U of I as a resource and find out how they handle their, 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 uh, stuff. My understanding is that a lot of, uh, surveillance that is up in Urbana and, uh, and on campus does go through, um, the MCAT, I think it's MCAD, right? The nine-one-one system. So, um, it, it would behoove us to actually, um, it, at the very least, uh, discuss in meetings or with someone, uh, uh, that has more experience in this and setting this type of system up, uh, and find out exactly where to go from here. If, 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 if in fact we are going to do this and, uh, and go and do it, do it well. But it wouldn't, it's not, this is not to be working in place of any type of program or anything like that. It is to be working, uh, to actually assist and, and help, uh, the citizens of, of Urbana.
I saw Shandra raise her hand, and then Mary Alice.
Hi, um, so thank you for, you know, getting us thinking about, um, all of this. Um, I wondered, you, I think when Linda was speaking, you mentioned, um, twenty-four hour monitoring. But then also you mentioned sort of using cameras after the fact as, uh, de facto witness. Um, just curious, like, which are you proposing or you're, or you're kind of throwing out ideas here?
Okay, what we have to do is, you guys have to come to the table. Like I said, I'm a, uh, I have a, not a doctor's, but a master's in training and development. You guys have to come to the table and look at the model that U of I is using. Hallelujah, and you see what needs to happen for that. That needs to be something that needs to be researched. I'm pretty sure you can use that model, 'cause usually when I set up training, I have different models, ADD, ASL model, or this style model, and see which model is the best model. And then from finding what model you wanna use, then you can find out what the cost's gonna be and all the rest that's gonna be. For me, just to say that, it wouldn't be fair. Hallelujah. So I'm just telling you straight out. I'm not trying to make nothing up. With the gun violence, though, with me experiencing gun violence in my family, my sister getting killed at a young age, hallelujah, and my nephew being killed in the city and never finding his murder, and a bunch of other friends being killed in the city. I take it very serious. I just don't do something just to do it. Hallelujah. And I don't do it to get paid. I do a lot of stuff for free and volunteer, because I wanna help my community. Ain't about getting my pockets fat or getting paid every two weeks. Hallelujah. It's about doing something to put back into our city, to keep our family and myself safe.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Linda. Um, also, uh, speaking of, you know, having these, um, cameras work in concert with community efforts, um, I, I think it's a multifaceted approach. Maybe because we're, um, the reason, possibly the reason why we're not getting such robust results from some of these things is because it is a multi-pronged, um, issue. You can't just focus on, um, one piece of it. You have to tackle all the things at the same time, from, from housing to public safety to prevention issues all at the same time. So, um, that's just my suggestion, and I, I look forward to hearing more about this.
You guys to sit on that board to make decisions, and we come in and give our input. Because I know you, Ms. Bishop, and I know I helped, I've been a lot of campaigns for you. Hallelujah, and you're a great person. So hallelujah, I'm pretty sure people should trust you and Diane and the board to come up with the solution.
And Shandra, and I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, that it is, it, you do have to come from many different directions. And, um, that, that's why I said all options are on the table. Um, but the other thing that I realize is that my normal, what's been normal for me in my life and had, and my raising and so on and so forth, is not everybody's normal. And so the one thing I know is that we're not gonna catch all the fish that we would love to catch and, and put them in the, in the, on the path that, that we would want them to go. People have self-determination, and they make their own choices. And some of those choices are not good choices. So, you know, that, it's harmful to them, and it may be harmful to other people in the community. But it's their choice to make. So as much as, as much as I would love to see or love to think that, that there would be a, a lot of other, uh, community, uh, programs that, that are put together and so on and so forth to, to help, uh, with those, with those issues that you're talking about, we have a lot of those in place. You know, to help people with their housing, to help students do better. There, you know, just working at the library, there's a, there're, there's tutoring and stuff like that at the library. There, there are all kinds of other, uh, there are church, church, uh, churches that have programs to, to mentor the youth. There, there are so many mentorship programs in Urbana that, um, it, it would be maybe helpful if we had the, the one-stop shop thing. But I'd, I'd, I'd like to just know even all of the, all the mentorship programs, you know, you, we have Boys and Girls Clubs. We have all types of programs, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, you know. But what, that would, that was what was my normal. I was in Girl Scouts. I was in Brownies and, and all that kind of stuff. Everybody's normal is not the same. And I can't make, nor can I impugn, uh, my values on somebody be, you know, because of this is what worked for me. Everyone's gonna make their own choices. People are gonna make their own choices. And some of these choices that are being made right now are, are harmful to our communities. And they, and it, it bothers me more than anything that some of these shootings that, that are going on, some of this, a lot of the gun violence over here on the, on, uh, in the ward, it's not even really my ward. It's just, it's like next door to my ward. But there's an elementary school there. There's a park there. There are children that go, that attend those schools. There's, there's a, a housing development in, in Urbana that is right, right on the, the cusp of all that. And there are children that live there. So, um, I'd just like to not see, uh, people in fear of their lives to just be able to go outside and play and on the playground, you know? We have to, I, I have to think about that. And I think as a city, we, we have to think about that.
Mary Alice, I think you had your hand up next.
Hey, I did. Uh, I, I just wanted to say, I mean, to, to speak a little to what Charisse is saying, is that we all, all have our own experience. And my experience is cameras has all been through the University of Illinois, which has a lot of cameras on campus. And the times that I've seen, uh, the police use those, of course, I don't work for the University Police Department, but they will take a screenshot and they will share it with the community to say that, you know, three people broke into, I think the latest one was a fraternity house, and they used those screenshots, and they actually identified those people. So I, I really think that what we're hearing from the public and Linda and Charisse and, and others is that there's, there's two ways to kind of use cameras. One is surveillance of a population, which you're constantly monitoring people and so forth. And the other way is to, to solve a crime. So when I, when I think about cameras, I think one way of, of doing this that may alleviate some concerns is to only use it if we're trying to, uh, if we're trying to solve a crime, if we're trying to identify somebody who participated in a crime. Um, and to me, that's all about policy, right? How is the camera actually used? How is the camera actually used? Um, so I think that there's really three things if city council is interested in pursuing this. One is easy, one is the cost. Um, the second one is, you know, what, there's the initial outlay of the cost. The second one would be the amount that you would have to support it. Um, so if that's personnel, if that's storage space, whatever that is. But then the third one, which is, I think, larger is the policy. And so I guess what I would say is I think just having a conversation with the University of Illinois Police Department and Rantool, just to understand if we can answer some of those basics might be a good starting point.
I think that's a great idea.
Grace?
Thanks, um, I was looking into some research on this and I understand that each place and each instance is different. Um, it seems like it's largely, um, pretty inconclusive overall. Um, these cameras have worked in some places, they haven't had an impact in other places. Um, sorry, there's a study that I looked up that I'd be happy to share with council and anyone else. And they talk about a few instances across the country. And I just wanted to quickly read off a list of their recommendations across these different case studies. And overall, in this, um, report, they recommended to balance utility with privacy, involve the community at the onset, don't underestimate the costs, anticipate technology upgrades, start small, consider location, invest in live monitoring and prioritize training. I think that's also the important piece, um, that Mary Alice and others were mentioning, that if something like this were in effect, we need to have clear policy on how and when it's used. And when it is used, how to do that efficiently. They talked about training their investigators how to use that footage effectively in court when it is appropriate. So, um, I'm not sure exactly how I feel about this, I hear the different sides and I think that it is a possibility. You know, like y'all have said, everything's on the table. I think there are a lot of other great programs to consider as well. Um, I'm interested in looking into this, but I think that if we do proceed, it needs to be very strategic and there needs to be a lot of community input and organizing from the get-go.
James?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna bring, uh, two things to this discussion. One is, um, the University of Illinois has been looking lately at being a smart campus, a smart community. And there are, there are options, um, that have been brought to the table in that discussion about devices that are both, uh, camera and gunshot detection, uh, and, and are, uh, connected to the network and, and can communicate and be, uh, a tool in that sense. But I want to go back to what, um, Mary Alice said, because I, I really want to reinforce that, you know, great, great tools, um, if you, if you're not careful about what the policy impact, what the, um, what happens with privacy with them, uh, can, can lead you into places where you, you have new problems that you didn't anticipate. Policy is, um, very important. And, uh, I was at the beginning of the, the policy development for cameras on the University of Illinois campus, um, when, when that started to become, uh, a, a thing for, uh, when, when it came to the residence halls on campus, in fact. And that was driven by an event and, uh, it was put together and there was, the policy had to be very carefully constructed. Cameras, uh, see what's in front of them and, and lots of things might be in front of them. Your doorbell camera that's on your back door might see into your neighbor's windows. And if that's not managed properly, it is, it is an invasion of privacy. Um, the other thing about policy is, um, who has oversight on how the cameras are used? There's always a place that is the nexus of, uh, where you can look at the feeds that are coming in. And it's important to have, um, information about who uses the cameras and when they use them and why they use them, why they look at them, to your, your point, Mary Alice, about using them to solve crimes. Well, then you have to, you have to know who's accessing those feeds and have a log of who did it and a reason associated with why they did it. So there, they, they provide an opportunity here, and I, I can see why they would be that way. I know campus is, uh, very engaged in resolving things that happen using the infrastructure that has been put in place with cameras. Um, but, but they've also been very careful about the policy and they've also been very careful about who, who has access to them. So we would need the same kind of care. Fortunately, we, we have them nearby and we can talk to their experts, just like we can talk to Rantool or other locations that are using them.
Any other questions regarding the presentation? Chris? You're muted.
Now you can hear me, okay. Um, yeah, my primary concern, um, well, there's a couple, the cost is, 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 would be kind of huge on this kind of project, but, um, effectiveness, um, I only know of, you know, one crime that's ever been solved by a camera. And that was the, um, case a couple of years ago with, uh, Chinese scholar. Um, so I would want to find out from the U of I and Randool and other, others, um, that use cameras, um, how many crimes are solved, like the camera identified the person? I'm sorry, so, um, I, I would like to know how many times that happens. Um, the other, um, thing is that, do they act as a deterrent? Um, you know, what, what we're, you know, what the programs are intended to do is to prevent people from shooting in the future. Cameras are reactive and only, you know, record after the fact of another shooting. Um, so my question would be, has, has campus and Randool seen a decrease in crime since the cameras have been installed? Um, so that would be another question. And here's a, you know, here's a, kind of a long-term fact. You know, we've been doing aggressive criminal justice for the last thirty years. Champaign County puts in about six hundred and forty-seven people a year into prison. And it has, and still here we are with this crazy problem. So, um, you know, just catching more criminals and putting them in jail might not be the long-term solution that we're looking for. But I'm willing, I, I really appreciate what Linda has done collecting the signatures and getting this going. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Hersi, all options are on the table. At least we are talking about constructive ideas instead of shouting and blaming each other. So, um, I really appreciate this conversation and let's do more of it.
Jay, can I say something else?
Yeah.
Kind of in, in answer to what, what Christopher was saying is this. Yes, there, you know, for the past thirty, thirty years plus, um, there has been aggressive, policing, mostly of people of color, more than anything. And we can say, oh, you know, well, that, that, that didn't work. And you're right, it didn't work, it, it, what it did is it pissed people off, okay? We can say the same thing about a lot of these mentor programs. And that's why I say that people, uh, are going to do whatever they're going to do. My normal is not someone else's normal. And I, and I don't, I just learned that, to be honest, I used to think that everybody, you know, had certain values inculcated in their, their growing up and the way that, where their parents, you know, what they did with their parents and what their parents did with them and so. And I found out being a school teacher, that wasn't so. And, and a lot of times I, I have adjusted and, 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 and I really do work to not judge those particular types of situations, because I, I, I can't, you know? So at the same time, we can say, well, you know, will the cameras, will the cameras do da-da-da-da? Well, we could take it back to, well, have, have the programs done that? Do we really know how, how many crimes have been prevented or how many, how many children we steered on a, on what we think is the right track for them or, or any track for them? You know, all, all of this, it, it's not just, um, you know, we can, we can talk about, we're not trying to use the cameras as a deterrent. I, I, I don't, I don't think that's the idea. I think the idea is that when something goes down, when I, when I hear fifteen rounds go off a, a block away from my house, um, I want to know who shot the gun. That's what I want to know. Not necessarily, if any, to be honest, I don't just worry about if someone got hurt or if someone got killed. I want to know also, are they gonna catch the person who did it? When last summer, I'm going out to, to weed my lawn and just before I step out the door, I hear ten shots go off two blocks from my house. Yeah, it didn't stop me from going out and weeding my lawn, I had to do what I had to do. But someone did get injured in those, in, in that shooting. Someone, you know, a couple of people, my understanding, got injured in those, in that shooting. I don't know that they ever, I hear about that, what I don't hear about is, did they ever catch the guy that did it? And maybe, maybe, did, did they, Linda, do you know?
No, uh, because like I said, people can see it. People were sitting right on that porch, a whole porch full of people saw that boy get shot down, didn't say one word, nothing. Hallelujah, and they've been back on that street, three murders, right one block from my house. Then I drove out of my driveway and almost got ran over by a car. I mean, the car just almost went, but they've been act, I mean, you people are not talking, so what are we gonna do? If they're not talking, you can't go out there and get them to take them to no programs either. Hallelujah, because they're not gonna talk to you. I mean, they're just, um, everybody is just intimidated. Cameras are not afraid, they're not intimidated. So that way.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just really about trying to solve those, you know, solve those issues, uh, that, that particular issue. You know, um, my neighborhood is, is, is located close to the interstate. It makes it very easy for a quick getaway. We may not ever know who, who did those shootings, we don't even know if they're from Champaign or Bend.
No. But you know what, everybody, like I say, Decatur got a camera, Rantool got a camera, then we have a camera. We can get some of these people off the street, they need to be off the street. You know, shooting up to downtown forty and fifty times, the guns shooting like that. You know, I wish we could find a way to, I hear they order these things off a line. It's something called a banana clip, I don't know what that is, but it makes the gun shoot many times. Hallelujah, and but these kids seventeen, sixteen, have these weapons. How'd they get these weapons? Where'd it come from?
Check in and see if there are any other questions. I saw, uh, Mayor Marlin raise her hand, um, I know, Chris, you'd raise your hand as well.
Yeah, and I know we have a, a, a lot more to get to.
Go ahead, I'll get off of here, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this presentation and it certainly gives us a lot to think about and a lot to look into. And it's very good pre- prelude to our discussion later this summer about the American Rescue Plan funding and how, um, you all want to invest that. But this, the cameras is not listed as a discussion topic on the agenda and we do have a packed agenda with some very important topics. So I'd encourage us to, um, to move on. But I want to thank you again, Linda and Sharice, for, for raising the issue, collecting the signatures, going door to door and, um,
Linda did all of that work, Linda did.
I know, she can do it, nobody does it like Linda. But, but, um, we can learn from our neighbors and, um, and it's, it's a possibility for discussion.
Well, thank you guys for listening and, uh, I hope and pray that you do something to help this gun violence, that we do something differently than what we've been doing, because what you're doing before was not, is not working. That's all I want to say, but thank you guys for letting, let me speak.
Are you okay moving on, since we, we did have just a set amount of time for a presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda and Sharice, uh, very much for that presentation. Um, so the discussion item for tonight, uh, is a review of public safety with a focus on racial equity and social justice, which will be led by, um, Councilmember Bishop and myself. Mary Alice, would you be willing to take the chair?
I'd be happy to take the chair. Uh, Jay, do you want, do you want to start us off? Or Shandra? I, I don't know which one.
Uh, I guess I, Clarity, do you need us to, to vote on something or you just want us to start off talking about the discussion item?
The discussion, so maybe, maybe, uh, I'm not sure if Shandra or Jay wants to give us a background in terms of what you want to cover in the discussion?
Absolutely, um, so I can start us off and Shandra, feel free to jump in, uh, as you feel comfortable. Um, so as you all know, I, I really appreciate that in the budget, we had an explicit, um, commitment to addressing structural racism, to addressing public safety concerns. Um, and that's something that I've been looking into, I know Shandra, other folks have been looking into for some time. But then especially after last week, when I brought up concerns about the proposed, um, the co-responder model, uh, there was a prompt to, to find an alternative. Um, so in, in response to that and also the stated needs within the budget, um, we started looking more closely at the research that is out there, did a literature review of best practices related to, um, public safety reforms. And then also talked to a few experts in the field who came up as part of that process of review. Um, basically, the best practices that we have found is to do something that is community-specific. And while I greatly appreciate that the budget has outlined specific suggestions for how to address this problem, we're advocating for taking a step back and thinking about what are the specific needs of our city. Um, we've heard tonight from, from folks about some potential things that might need some more research. Um, this is a community that is often data-driven, we've seen that with the CIP, we've seen that, um, with many of the projects the city engages in, is being intentional, doing that research to determine what is the need before trying to address the problem. And one thing that's particularly important with this issue is if the wrong option is chosen, there's actually a great potential for it to backfire. Um, that they could potentially increase distrust, could increase, uh, concerns about safety, um, if we're implementing a program that is not a good fit for our community. So with that in mind and looking over, um, information that was sent by city staff about how funds have been allocated, um, what we're suggesting is using money that had been set aside, both from last year's budget and this year's budget for an alternate response model, right? So what was referred to as one door in the last fiscal year. Um, and then also thinking about money that has been set aside, um, for de-escalation training. Not to say that those things should not occur, but then an analysis of the benefit and the appropriateness for our city should occur before implementing a model, um, that we do not know will work for our city. So that is the general gist, um, Shandra, did I miss anything?
No, I think you're good. I mean, bottom line is, we'd like to conduct an assessment of alternatives to law enforcement responses to crises in our community. It's, it's as simple as, um, having someone, um, sort of help us outline what, what our community specifically needs. Um, we've heard, as Jay said, we've heard a lot of, um, ideas and suggestions. Um, and this analysis and review will basically present us with the roadmap that we need, um, to make changes and how to, uh, fundamentally re-envision public safety in Urbana.
And we're happy to elaborate or answer any questions that folks may have. I know this is something that folks might have or want more information about, but we're thinking about making changes to the budget, um, so that there is funding to be able to ensure that we can be intentional about what decisions we're making. Uh, it is important that we're thinking about this quickly.
So, uh, Chris, is your hand still up or?
Yeah, but go ahead if you want, you know, jump in.
Well, I, I'm chair at the moment, so.
Oh, yeah, my hand is up, okay, yeah.
All right, Chris?
Okay, thank you, um, uh, James, you might remember this, uh, in twenty thirteen, the county board, uh, established something called the Community Justice Task Force and they did a full study about the alternatives to our incarceration. So I just wanted to call your attention to that, they did issue a final report. Um, I, I can send it to you, but, um, there is kind of Um, I, I can send it to you, but, um, there is kind of, you know, what I would call a starter kit for this kind of, uh, investigation.
Yes, if you would definitely share that with, with us, I would gladly take a look at that.
Yeah, and, and advocating for setting aside money for evaluation, I think that having an understanding that money should go towards implementation of any recommendations if there is excess, because of course we want to be good stewards of the, the money that is available to the city. And so if there is a finding that there is some of that research that has already been conducted, I think that's something that would need to be part of an initial piece of this plan.
All right. Grace?
Uh, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I was trying to understand, um, clarify what the proposal was too. So taking the money from One Door set aside from last year that wasn't used for, uh, there is some for the co-responder model in this upcoming budget and for the, and the de-escalation training.
Correct. Yeah, and, and that's again, not to say that those things shouldn't happen, but that we should do an assessment before implementing them. Um, so specifically, we're talking about a commitment. I, I want to have a look through our budget of what that would mean. Um, and I, again, I think that it's important that if this is added as a budget amendment and we can discuss about lang- language about what that would need to look like, um, that we are clarifying the uses of the money and also what would be done if there's any excess. Um, so we're talking about two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars coming from ninety-two thousand, five hundred from fiscal year twenty-one. That was the One Door commitment. Um, there's also a ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollar, um, commitment for fiscal year twenty-two, the one we're about to enter. Um, that has been earmarked for a co-responder model based on, um, information that was provided by city staff. And then there's the thirty-five thousand dollars that was earmarked for police escalation training. De-escalation training, whatever.
Thank you.
And, uh, Diane?
Um, just, just a clarification here. Um, I think this, this is a very, um, promising approach and it's similar to what we had discussed last year, actually, when we were talking about, um, evaluating or creating a, um, re-envisioning public safety and defining, redefining public safety and public well-being. Just a clarification on the funding though, ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Yes, Kate was said it was, um, it's available from last year's budget when one full-time officer's position was, um, eliminated. There is thirty-five thousand dollars set aside for training. I'm not sure if you're getting the ninety-four thousand dollars, um, that was, that was another full-time officer position. Is that what you're talking about?
No, so, um, I, I know that the commitment of a full-time officer position was included in the budget. Um, and I do think it's important to clarify that until an evaluation has been done, that staff time is not dedicated to a model that hasn't been assessed. But I didn't want to confuse the matter of, uh, uh, messing with, with staffing. Um, this was a information in another, uh, uh, line item that was provided by city staff when.
Okay, so, so just so that, that position is not being, okay, good.
Not factored into this calculation.
Great, thank you.
James?
Yeah, I, I did want to mention, um, the thing that Chris, Chris described was, was a community review. It was, uh, local people, um, but I also want to point out uh, that, uh, the county had invested quite a bit in a study, uh, from a consultant that did some of the building blocks that they used, to get, to get started, um, uh, there was a, a third party brought in, uh, from outside to do that kind of assessment of our, uh, criminal justice system and find, it provided a lot of the details. That analysis provided a lot of the details. But I think the, the task force referred to in, in their reporting and, and guided some of their work. So, so it, it was inexpensive for that task force to do their work, but they did have some building blocks that represented investment that the county put in to the question.
And we did get a, a quote for what, uh, about like an outside consultant might cost, um, based off of a project that was run for a city of a comparable size. Um, I don't want to conflate exactly, you know, like saying, oh, this is what they did, but just wanted to have an estimate of what that might look like if we chose to bring up, bring in an outside consultant. Um, and that particular report that was generated, uh, cost about a hundred thousand dollars, right? So that would be, this would be more than enough money for this if effort, if there was a consultant along those lines. I'd love to hear more about the consultant that has worked in our community um, as well to see if that might be someone who'd be a more appropriate fit. Um, I definitely am interested in information from twenty thirteen, but.
I wouldn't recommend that particular consultant because that consultant was in the business of telling you what kind of jail you needed. So it was a capital program.
Yeah.
Um, it was of the three people that we considered. It was what I would call the most progressive resource we could have had for that. Um, but they were competing, competing against architectural firms, uh, that, that wanted to propose uh, a new building. And so I, I would not expect them to, to be competitive in this particular conversation.
Grace?
Yeah, um, yeah, this is my, one of my questions too, is if you had an idea of who or what organization would do this study and also just a thought on the thirty-five thousand, um, for police training. I am interested in possibly separating that from this um, and using it for community-based training and/or evaluations and recommendations for our current training. There are some people and groups at the U of I that have been evaluating uh, police training through an equitable and racial justice lens. And I think maybe them partnered with some community organizations could also be something effective. Um, and also just in the sense so that we have some actionable thing towards it for the next year. I definitely agree that we need information to make a bigger picture, you know, um, plans and goals for it. And, um, especially since it might not require the money from all three of those pools to do this assessment. Um, just an idea that it might be helpful to keep that thirty-five thousand and use it for community-based police training or reforming, um, or enhancing our current training that's offered through the city.
Chris?
I think that's.
Sorry.
Sorry, how to respond? Um, I, I think that's a very, very understandable point. I, I think, um, I see that desire for, for de-escalation training. I think that, that, um, intention to do that is really important. Um, there is kind of mixed research about efficacy of different programs. And so a- again, just taking that step back and really thinking about what model do we want to use? Um, is that what, what's going to provide the best support for our, our folks in public safety? Um, how does that connect to the community? Um, would be why I would suggest creating one pool and then allocating accordingly, but, uh, this is obviously a discussion.
I just would like the definition on what Grace considers a community-based training. What is that?
Um, in previous meetings, I had suggested that if we were going to spend this money for police training, that the training not be done by a police training organization because they already have a lot of that. Um, Chief Seraphin has said that almost all of our U P police officers already undergo a de-escalation training through the Police Training Institute. Um, so as, you know, Linda Turnbull has said that, you know, there's no sense in doing more of the same thing if it doesn't seem to be as effective.
She wasn't talking about that.
That it comes from more of a community focus and perspective instead of, uh, traditional police training institute.
Could you give me an example of, of something of a program like that? Do you know of one? Could you give me an example?
That's community-based?
Yeah.
Um, as I mentioned, there are some at the U of I. I can send you some of the articles. Um, I thought I had already to all council, but.
Yeah, you said, you said, I, I saw the article regarding, um, how the, the, um, how the P T I and the, uh, works with uh, different departments at the U of I to do de-escalation. Is, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, but I think from those individuals more than the P T I as a whole and in collaboration with community organizations. Um, like I've seen, you know, First Followers do a lot of great things with programming and some of the coalitions they're working with. So I would be interested in looking into a partnership between traditional police training through an equity lens and community partners in either doing a new training system and/or re-evaluating our current training system so that this isn't an, you know, an extra training. This is just part of all police training in Urbana. And I agree that we need more information. I'd also be interested in pursuing that route.
Okay.
All right, if there, if there aren't any more comments, I think I'm going to have to ask Sharice to take the chair so I can have a comment.
I will take the chair, Mary Alice. Mary Alice?
Um, yeah, so I just kind of wanted to give some perspective. Um, last year when we were talking about One Door, One Door is something that's been around for a long time. Um, the concept of it has been, and I think the biggest challenge that, that the cities have faced is that then it requires a lot of, um, collaboration with different entities. And, and so Jay and I had a really conversation last week kind of about what she was thinking along these lines. And I, I agree, I think that, um, oftentimes when we work in academia, when we work in a university, we always look and say, okay, well, what does the research tell us and what has it shown us? And certainly several people talked tonight at, at Public Input about, you know, well, the research shows us this and this. And I, I think that we do really have to figure out what is the best model for the city of Urbana. Um, it's great to be able to look at that research and say, okay, well, these models worked here and here. Um, but we don't know what's going to work here. And, um, this also kind of, uh, it expands a little bit upon one of my ideas in terms of looking at all of our police incidences to figure out like what is the distribution. I started some of that process. I haven't finished it, um, but it would be great um, if we were able to hire an outside entity to be able to do an external, um, look at what our public safety model is. What do, you know, what's happening in our city and what might be best that we could do to address it. Um, so I, I'm in full support of doing something along those lines and if, uh, we need to do, uh, to rename something in the budget that basically says we set aside this amount of money to do that, I think that that makes a lot of sense to me. So that's my comment. Um, so I'm going to take the, well, Sharice, you can, you can, you can run it and see if anybody else has any comments.
Does anyone else have any comments? Actually, I was, I was going to make a comment, so Mary Alice, you can have it back.
Okay, I'll have, I'll have it back.
Um, because I wanted to say that I, that I, in, I agree with you in that, in that, um, we need to know what works best for Urbana and, and to continually continue to, uh, compare Urbana with, with every other Tom, Dick and Seattle. Um, it, it, it doesn't do us any good because uh, I'm, I, I was born and raised here, so I, I'm going to see, uh, what I'm going to bring to any, any, um, discussion is what my experience in growing up in Urbana was and how that was. Uh, many, some, you know, some of you are transplants. You've been here for maybe fifteen years or whatever, but my family has been here since the, the twenties. You know, so, so, um, I have a different, I have a, I have, I'm going to have a different uh, perspective. And being a black woman and having lived, and living in where I live and having lived here and not just here, but lived in Los Angeles for several years. I see, I, I, I can make a, I, I think I have a, a perspective and not only that, I lived in Louisville, Kentucky too for a little while. I have a different perspective on, on even when I lived there, it's like, oh no, we didn't do stuff like that in Urbana. That didn't happen in Urbana. People, you know, were constantly saying, you're not in Urbana. And, but I was saying that because I put Urbana up here against Los Angeles, you know? I can take that even further down, but i- it's, it's, um, I, I, I think that it is, it would be to our benefit to have a third-party source to come in with no background with, and just look at how things are, you know, and I'm not going to say no background because of course they'll get a little. They'll, you know, they'll, it, they'll, they'll be historical stuff that, that they will look at. However, it, it, it would just be to our, I think, the benefit of the, of the city as a whole and as, and its citizens for someone that, that doesn't have a vested interest. Whether because they were, they were born and raised here like I, I, I am, or they've just come to love the city as, as many other people have. Uh, it would just be to our benefit to have someone say, you know, for us to hear the good, bad and the ugly uh, of where we need to go and how, how we can, and they can be more objective about it, I think, than any of us could be.
Sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that the two of you, Mary Alice and, and Sharice articulated what I was trying to say more eloquently than I did, um, that we are talking about, uh, an external review, ideally that there would be that evaluation of data, that there would be community-focused groups, right, that there would be someone who doesn't have their heart and soul in the city already to be able to take that step back and say, okay, here's what we think you need. Um, because it is something that very easily becomes emotional. It is something that very easily becomes, uh, this one person thinks this is the right thing. And I'm not suggesting that that is what has happened in terms of some of the suggestions that have come up recently, but just encouraging that attentionality, encouraging, kind of thinking about how do we lay the foundation um, for collaborative, community-based, um, response that is going to look at involving folks from across the departments in, in our city and across the, um, various parts of our city to get feedback from our residents to make sure that we're coming up with something that's a, a good fit for Urbana.
Shandra, I'm not trying to, uh, not ask you to answer any questions. Your box is moved on my screen here, so please chime in on anything.
No, you're fine. Um, I'm, I'm a good, uh, wing person, so.
All right, well, if there's a, a Grace?
Oh, sorry, yeah, just one more question if, um, so this is just a discussion and no vote now, but I imagine that there would be a proposed amendment when we do get to the budget item later in the meeting?
Yes, I think so.
I, I would imagine that that's probably what's going to be. And, and I'm open to correction if, if it's something that would be easy. Yeah, Elizabeth, go ahead. We're, we're ready for your expertise.
Yeah, yes, I can make that happen.
Great, perfect.
It's a lot about the budget. It can be amended.
Uh, so if there's, there's no other discussion or comments, questions, I'm going to hand the chair back to Jay. Oh, wait, sorry. Diane?
I'm, I'm still not clear on what this amendment will be, but we'll hear that. But I am concerned about removing funding for the de-escalation training. The, um, previous city council, of course, passed a resolution emphasizing de-escalation in policing. The use of force policy, which is about one and a half sentences away from being complete is, is, uh, prioritizes and emphasizes de-escalation and it was clearly what the community wanted. And when you think about, we have about twenty-five thousand calls for service per year in this community. Use of force involves only about a hundred to a hundred fifty incidents. So most, we know that most of the incidents are already de-escalated, ninety-nine point six percent. But it's those others, that very, very small percentage that has a big impact on people um, on the community and on officers, on everybody. So, so I, I am very concerned about, you know, diverting all that, uh, all the thirty-five thousand dollars that was set aside for training. We didn't identify, um, exactly what kind of training would be, who would do it. I know the chief provided, um, one, um, possible source for the training, but no decisions have been made. I really would hesitate to divert that funding away from potential opportunities for training this year.
I think you're raising some of the, the reasons for, for an evaluation too, of there is such extensive training that at least from what has been shared with me, I, I don't feel confident saying that's the solution we need, right? Because we do know that there's incredible training that's already happening. Um, we are seeing those changes in policies. And so again, just thinking about, is that the best tool that we can offer our officers or is there something that would be more beneficial? But again, I, I see there are other folks who've got their hands up too.
Shandra, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was essentially going to say what, what Jay mentioned. Um, I think that de-escalation training, they've had that, they've done that. I know Chief said that, um, this new model he was looking at out of Texas would be more intense or, or more, um, in depth, but, um, we do need to see if, you know, if de-escalation training is is actually being effective in our city. Um, and I think that it is, um, on us to take a look at that and, and make an accurate assessment before um, we're investing money maybe somewhere we don't necessarily need to invest.
So, Shandra?
So, Chandra, are you saying that maybe we don't need to invest any monies at all in de-escalating?
Absolutely not. No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, no, I just wanted to, uh, you know, or are you just, or I, I was just trying to, to, to under-understand.
I'm saying that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Chandra.
No, go ahead. I, I, she.
All right, Grace?
Um, I just had a quick question on if or when the new use of force policy would be available to the council and the public.
In the next few weeks.
Thank you.
All right, so Jaya and Chandra, do you guys have any last thoughts that you want to share with council? No? Okay, I will hand the chair back to Jaya then.
Thank you. Um, I will retake the chair. Um, and now we will move on uh to ordinances and resolution, resolutions, excuse me. The first is ordinance number twenty-two-one dash oh-six dash oh-two-three, an ordinance amending fiscal year budget, fiscal year twenty-one budget to be presented by the finance department.
So um you actually have one memo that covers two ordinances here. And the one I'm going to speak to first is at, at the back. It's the, it's called an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. And so annually, when we approve the budget, we, we amend the current budget to conform to all that estimate, the estimates that you saw in the budget book. So that column that said FY twenty-one estimated. And then you also have here attached a list of changes from that column that we would make in that final budget amendment. So let me, let me just go over a few of those things. Um, so there are a number of um revenue estimate revisions. This year has been, I'm going to say particularly difficult with the pandemic to to make revenue projections, but even in a normal year, we're kind of refining those as we receive more information um as we go through the year. So there are a number of adjustments to revenue estimates. Um, and a couple of them just relate to timing of payments, but, but there's some significant adjustments even aside from that. Um, there is a reallocation in the general fund um in the legal budget from salaries into services. And I, and I think we've talked about that one time before, that that often happens when we have a vacancy, we move money from a salary line into a services line to pay for services as a substitute. Sorry, um, there are also um changes in several other funds in capital improvement fund and motor fuel tax funds, um TIF funds. And most of those, again, are, um, many of those, again, are adjustments in revenues. Um, just really, we've had timing issues with property tax revenues, particularly the last couple of years. That seems to be on track now, but that still affects the current fiscal year. And then um there was um a significant shift in one particular project in the motor fuel tax fund for Lincoln and Springfield. And um, I believe there's an appropriation, a motor fuel tax appropriation later on the agenda. So Tim will speak to that a little bit more. But basically, the bids came in significantly higher than expected in that. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I'm mixing up my pages here. That's in the budget. Too much going on here. Yeah, so anyhow, a number of changes from what you saw in the budget book. It's, to me, most of them are pretty routine. Some of the revenue shifts are pretty significant. Um, you have not, this new council has not yet approved a budget amendment, but a budget amendment, as opposed to approving the original budget, does require a supermajority. So it requires six of eight votes, and that includes the mayor. She votes on budget amendments.
Mary Alice, sorry.
Sorry, uh, Elizabeth, in terms of this budget amendment, uh, the, the big, big one in terms of the revenue is the U of I fire service. Is that a timing in terms of when they paid us? Are we charging them a different amount?
It, it's a timing thing. I mean, the amount goes up gradually every year along with our costs. But I believe we received five, the billing cycle got a little out of whack, and we received five quarters of revenue in this fiscal year rather than four that we would normally receive.
So would we normally see, receive about two-point-three million?
Hmm, yeah. That sounds about right, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's a large amount of money.
Are there any other questions for Elizabeth?
Oh, and sorry, I will point out one other thing. So um based on your previous conversation about um policing, I assume that you will want me to provide a revised exhibit for this amendment for the next, um, the next meeting. And what we will do is, in the budget amendment, we will reduce spending in the current year by the ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then we'll talk about the rest of it when we move on to the budget ordinance, because there's a change that will have to happen there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Grace, I saw your hand as well.
Uh, thanks. Just wanted to have a little clarification about the American Rescue Plan second distribution of when that was, and that's not the new money that came in. Is that going into twenty-two budget, or how does that work?
So we received the first distribution in this fiscal year, and that was about half of the total that we expect. And then when we originally prepared the budget, we, we didn't know when we would receive the second distribution. So you'll see the second distribution in the um ordinance approving the budget for next year. And all of that is going into a separate fund created specifically for American Rescue Plan. There are no expenses budgeted in that, in that fund at this time. So whatever comes out of that conversation will have to amend the budget.
Erin Marlin?
Just a reminder, um, there are no guarantees that we will get that second year's distribution. I'm on weekly calls with um mayors around the country and the Treasury Department and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And as I, I think I mentioned earlier, there's, there's an effort underway in Congress to divert some of that second-year allocation that's meant to go to the cities toward, to the larger um federal infrastructure bill. So we don't know yet what the final allocation will be yet for the second year. We know what we were promised, but we should not count on getting that until we have more information. And things are changing. They're still writing the rules. Um, this is still being debated, so things are changing daily on that. We know, we know we have the first half in the bank.
Any more questions? First?
Thanks, sorry, a few more. I saw um that a lot of them are from position moved, and that's from moving um city clerk to executive. Is that correct?
Um, yes, I think you're actually looking at the budget ordinance for next year as opposed to the budget amendment.
Okay, so that's the ordinance for the, and one for this amendment are those two. And that part of the memo, is that correct?
Correct. The memo is divided into two sections and, and we've got the second part first on the agenda. So at the back, at the back of that document that was all together, you're looking at the ordinance that says an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance and the exhibit that says budget amendment twenty-two-one dash six, number six.
Thanks. Any other questions? Is there discussion or motion?
Um, I will move that ordinance number twenty-two-one zero-six zero-two-three, an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget be sent to city council with a recommendation for approval.
A second.
Um, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sheree's um to send ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero-six dash zero-two-three, an ordinance amending the FY twenty-one budget to council uh with a recommendation for approval. Um, any further discussion? Will the clerk please call it all?
Mr. Quisenberry? Yes. Okay. Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes. That motion passes. All right, um, the next ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero-six dash zero-two-four, an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-two budget to be presented by the finance department. So Elizabeth, I'm guessing that's you as well.
Actually, it's adopting.
Adopting, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's me again. So again, here you have attached the ordinance and exhibit. And what that exhibit shows is all the changes between what was in the proposed budget document that you received and what we're asking you to actually approve. So I'll give you some, some real quick information on those. Um, so again, a number of revenue estimate updates. It's, you know, been a, been a challenging year for revenue estimates, and we would be updating them regardless as we got new information. There are a few things that I listed, listed in a paragraph called budget errors. One of them, one of them was um an error that was pointed out by a council member. We completely somehow lost the training budget for the city council. So that is corrected. And then the, the one million that got misallocated in the budget that should have gone to the um equal project is corrected here. Um, there is a paragraph in the memo about police training institute, and I'm going to apologize. I used last year's memo um for format, and that doesn't belong here in this year, so ignore that paragraph. Um, the staffing for FOIA requests that, that we had a question about is also included here. So there's one position being shifted from the city clerk's budget into the executive department. And with that goes a shift in that responsibility as well. And then a number of smaller items in the general fund. Um, in other funds, probably the two most significant things you'll see are in the capital improvement fund, the correction for, of the budget for the equal program, so increasing it to two million dollars. And then in the motor fuel tax fund, the cost increase on the Lincoln and Springfield project, which has to do with the bids coming in um higher than estimated. And I know that Tim will be addressing that later with the motor fuel tax appropriation. So that's a quick summary. Um, I will also say that then I would pick up, in this ordinance, I would pick up the ninety-two thousand five hundred that we're going to remove from fiscal twenty-one. I will add that here as an add to the fiscal twenty-two budget um related to the previous discussion.
Are there any questions? Mary Alice?
Um, I don't really have a question. I had more, and I don't know if this belongs when we do a discussion. I did want to talk a little bit about the training, so I guess I'll wait and see if there's a motion before we, we go forward with that.
Grace?
Um, just a procedural question, too, with adopting this budget, if this is where we need to make the amendments? Like, for the community safety, is that an official amendment we need to make now, or something that staff working?
So, so, so we're talking about the, the previous discussion this evening, correct? Okay, right. So what I will do is, before next week, I'll provide you a revised exhibit that will take care of the changes that you discussed tonight. It's just a lot, it's a lot easier that way than you can see how I interpreted what you asked for and make sure that it's, in fact, what you wanted. And so at the meeting next week, um, somebody will have to, you know, offer that as a substitute um for the exhibit that you have here now.
Because I have another amendment to propose. That's the appropriate time to make that motion?
There isn't a, there isn't anything on the floor right now.
Yeah, I think we're just at questions at this point. So if there are any question, other questions about the um amendments that are listed in front of us? Okay.
I can make a motion to get this on the floor so we can discuss. If that's okay. All right, I'll uh move that we send ordinance number twenty-two-one zero-six zero-two-four, ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-two budget uh with a recommendation for approval to city council.
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sheree's. Um, so sorry, um, is there uh what, any discussion? Grace?
Um, thank you. I would like to consider um moving to council without a recommendation just so that we still have time for discussion next week or anything that might happen within the next week. Um, and then, as I said, I do have another amendment to propose, but I'll let some discussion with this occur first.
I'm fine uh changing my motion to be a recommendation with no approval. It's fine with me.
Okay, a second.
Um, I, I guess I have a question. Um, you were, uh, Elizabeth, you were talking about the, the cost of the Lincoln and Springfield um based on the, uh, the, the cost of the bids or the, how, how the bids came in. So we, we didn't get a, a bid that was, that was working within the budget, we, I imagine.
Correct. And if Tim wants to jump in here, he can probably give a better explanation, but this happens sometimes with construction projects. The bids come in higher than we expected.
Sure, and, and I'll, I'll jump in here just real quick, and I'll talk about it in more detail later. But we did just open bids within the last two weeks on this project, and the bids were sixteen pers, for construction were sixteen percent over our estimate on that. Um, what I would relate it to is the volatility of oil prices, because we're doing a lot of uh hot mix asphalt on this. And COVID's availability of both labor and materials, I think, has impacted it somewhat. So what we've seen is a drastic increase in, in prices right now. And you, you know, generally speaking, we can talk about it more, but my recommendation that we'll talk about later is to accept this. Um, I don't know that we're going to get better bids in any kind of timely fashion. And this road project has really been deferred for probably three or four years at this point already.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I guess a, a question that I have, too, is, you know, considering Lin, Lincoln Avenue, it's kind of like a, a gateway into Urbana. Um, can we get any I-DOT funds from that, for that at all?
It, it's actually uh one project that we tried to list for the, the earmark funding that our senators requested uh projects for. That is basically shovel-ready, which, that, that's still potential. Um, and yeah, there's, there's other potential grants out there. We've uh, for our local grant uh funds for, through COATs, we've opted to pursue those for the Florida Avenue project. And likely, we'll try to pursue them for the remainder of the Lincoln project from Green Street all the way down to Florida for the next phase of this as well, which will be even costlier projects for us in the next six or seven years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Grace?
I'd like.
Are you having Mary Alice go first?
Yes, oh, sorry.
Mary Alice and then Grace then.
I, yeah, I, I wanted to address a little bit about the conversation before about uh de-escalation training. So I was the sponsor of, for the bill that we, or not, sorry, the resolution that we passed back in February about emphasizing de-escalation. And so what I, what I don't want to happen is I don't want us to set up our police force to fail. Um, and so if we are asking them to emphasize de-escalation, if we are changing the use of force policy to emphasize de-escalation, I want to ensure that our police force has the right tools that they can implement um what we are asking them to do. And so And so uh, I, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we should take the thirty-five thousand dollars and say, no, we're, we're not going to do that. I would be happy with saying training um, to be identified later. But I also want to give them the resources that they might need to increase the amount of training to be able to see that use of force in, in practice. So that was my comment.
Grace?
Um, on that note, I would be um, okay with considering that too of keeping the little bit for training and then those other pools of money, there's still, that's almost two hundred thousand, which seems like it should be able to cover the cost of an assessment and anything left over for implementing it, which I agree is an important part. And is that, I have another amendment to propose before we vote, but I don't know if there's any discussion for things as they are first. So I'll wait.
James?
Yeah, I do, I do want to echo what Mary Alice said. I, I can say that uh, in my conversations with constituents, it, it has resonated to give our police uh, tools and support in areas that um, don't focus on use of force um, in, in those areas. So, so I would, I would also be against um, taking money away from training, particularly in the areas of de-escalation. I do, I do um, hear uh, what Grace has said and maybe others about the idea of looking for that um, de-escalation training uh, from, from maybe a different perspective than uh, focused um, police training. It does have to have police training in mind because we are training police officers. But um, some, some of the approaches that have been used or developed over the last twenty years are, are still not working. So some alternative paths there, I would, I would, I would encourage us looking at those.
Uh, Charisse and then Chris?
Okay, I, I just want to say that uh, in keeping with the ten share principles that we adapted um, uh, last year regarding that very thing, de-escalation, uh, that, that is, I, I think the, the premise of, of what Mary Alice wrote her resolution on even, the, regarding that. But the other thing is that um, um, I, I guess what, what I kind of want to say is that when, when I consider the amount of calls that the police go out on and um, how many of, how, how many, you know, end up being maybe um, somewhat um, challenging, to say the least. Uh, I, I think that, I think that our, our police force does work at actually trying to keep uh, de-escalation in mind when they encounter the citizens. I don't see how it hurts to have, of course, it never hurts to have uh, more training or, or anything like that and maybe doing it with a, from a, a, a different cup of tea uh, might be helpful. So I, I, I just want to, you know, want everybody to keep that in mind. You know, twenty-five to thirty thousand calls a year and um, you know, I, I don't know uh, if, if any, if any of us could, could actually say that there's not going to be that, one of those moments. So where there's not going to, you know, something's not going to go exactly the way you had hoped. So what I would, I, I just want, I just want people to keep that in mind. So I, I think the training regarding de-escalation is important. I do think that, that it is being, it has been useful. I, I don't remember in the years I've, since I've been back nor even bef, before I left where Urbana Police had any type of kind of like Rodney King incidents. So I think we, you know, need to kind of keep that in mind too. That it, it, you know, every, everything is, is, it may not be perfect, but it's also not um, uh, like you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater type of situation either. So I think we should, you know, keep that in mind when we're talking about de-escalation training. Because we do have that as a resolution. That's the, one of the main precepts of the ten shared uh, principles.
Chris?
Um, yeah, uh, to piggyback Charisse's comments uh, and Mary Alice's, um, uh, it is true that uh, your band police department rarely, and I wish uh, more people understood this, that rarely ever uses force. So we're not asking for de-escalation because we have a problem. We're, um, I, I was asking for de-escalation uh, because like Mary Alice said, I mean, here we are as a council, you know, emphasizing the ter, ten shared principles and asking that the police department make de-escalation a priority. And, you know, de-escalation will not be a hundred percent foolproof um, against having to use force. Sometimes force will need to be used. But I would like, what I'm hoping is that officers are, are given additional training so that they have a better chance at deploying some techniques and some strategies that will avoid force if they can. It's not easy work. You know, when people are drunk, high, angry, or having a mental health crisis uh, live in real time, you know, those are not easy situations. Off, and I just want officers to maybe, you know, that would be their first go-to move is de-escalation if they, if they know how to do it. But there's no guarantee that it will work and, and, you know, force might have to be applied uh, in certain situations. And again, um, what Charisse is saying, we rarely use force. I mean, the department is uh, you know, doesn't have a uh, I mean, I, I know we talked a lot about the Aliyah Lewis case tonight, but you know, that uh, you know, that was an outlier. That, that is a very rare event um, that, that force has ever applied. Grace, I'm willing to work with you on uh, you know, does, does the community need to be more involved? Does it need, need to be from a community's perspective? Does race need to be brought in? I think um, you know, possibly, I think, but I think we need to be co-designers with the department, with the chief and the department on this. And, you know, uh, you know, try to find a, a mix or a balance or, you know, something that, and, and give the chief a chance to sell us on why he chose Plano, Texas. And maybe, you know, uh, explain to us why he did choose that and, and, and maybe that might be the way to go too. But Grace, I'm, I'm open to your ideas about uh, you know, using Dr. Chijua's program and uh, Dr. Schlosser's program. But we'll, you know, we, I don't want to be in a hurry on this either. I mean, let's just set the money aside as a placeholder and then, you know, let's design it uh, later as we have time.
Mary Alice, would you be willing to take the chair again?
I will take the chair. The chair recognizes Jay.
Thank you. I, I mean, I want to make sure Shandra has a chance to, to weigh in as well. It sounds to me like folks are, are saying, make sure that that piece is still allocated separately, but then just maybe having a little bit more of a conversation about how it's being implemented. Um, I don't think that that's contrary to what I was hoping for. I think just advocating for more of a discussion. And did a quick, quick calculation that I think we'd still be looking at a hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars towards an evaluation effort. Shandra, do you have any thoughts on that? And then I can take the chair back whenever.
I, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right, then I release the chair to Jay.
Thank you, Mary. Grace?
I'm still confused if we need to vote on this or it's just going in as a change to the budget that we'll vote on next week or if we need to vote on the amendment itself.
So, so based on your discussion, I think I can prepare an updated exhibit, updated exhibit. So I think if you just um, forward it on to council and then next Monday, somebody can substitute the exhibit. And of course, if there are other changes you want to talk about at that time, you can do that.
And I.
Charisse and then Mayor Marlin?
All, all I was going to say is can we move it for approval with the amendments? Isn't that what we generally, isn't that how we kind of do that? With the, with the proposed amendments?
Current motion is for um, forwarding to council with no recommendation is the current.
Right, that's, so we could get on the table to discuss it. So my, my question is that um, if, eh, can we move the, the ordinance adopting, adopting FY twenty-two budget to, for, to council for approval with said amendments that we've discussed during this discussion? Is, is, would that be okay? Or is it something that no, no one wants to do? I'm.
Yeah, I, I, Charisse, I'm, I'm not sure if we've discussed it and we've known the changes that make it acceptable. I don't understand why we're moving it without recommendation.
Yeah, I don't either. I think Mayor Marlin wanted to say something, Jay.
Yep.
Just going back to Elizabeth's point, um, the reason she is saying she'll incorporate what you want changed into the um, document that's brought forth next week. It's to save you from trying to craft an amendment on the floor. But she takes notes very carefully on what you've said and it will be incorporated. So it'll be easy enough for you to pass next week. Whether or not, I mean, whether or not you move it with no recommendation or a recommendation for approval, that's up to you tonight. But, but as far as the changes that you want, it will be reflected in what comes to, to you next week. Just makes it, make sure, it, it just makes it more accurate.
Mary Alice?
I, I just wanted to know what people, I mean, I'm happy to change my motion again and say with a recommendation for approval and to incorporate the items that we discussed tonight. I don't know if that would assuage what Grace's concern was. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that if other people are open to that, I'm happy to do that.
Shandra?
I think I would like if um, if you added that to the motion, Mary Alice.
Okay, all right.
So we're, James, go ahead and then I guess.
I was just going to say, I, I, the, referring it to the, the council uh, without recommendation usually indicates there's like some unanswered questions and, and, or some reservations that we have a consensus that haven't been reviewed. I, either way works, but it, it represents the confidence in what we're sending to the full council. I mean, it's just us, right? But, but if, but if, if we're still feeling like we don't want to recommend it, that means that people are, I feel like people are still holding back things they still would like to change. And so they're not ready to commit to putting it out there. So if, if that's the case, I'd like to, I'd like to know it now and talk about it. But if, but if we've addressed those, I'd, I'd rather us say, okay, we're, we're comfortable with it is now, how it is now and what Elizabeth's going to add to it.
So I'll go ahead and change my motion to send ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero six zero two four, ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-two budget to city council with a recommendation for approval with staff direction to change the allocation for the approximately a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars um, from the budget to be set aside for an external evaluation of uh, of, of public safety.
Grace? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have to do roll call or are we good?
Unless there's discussion.
If there's still.
I think Grace has a.
Old discussion still going.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, because in um, response to that, I think my, my thought for saying without recommendation is just that um, in my mind, there's always still more to be done and explored in the next week. And it seems like it's not that big of a practical difference. You know, we'll vote next week regardless. Just seemed like it was kind of keeping things open for more discussion next week and for some things to change. And I do still have some other thoughts and potential amendments I'd like to bring up. One, a smaller one, maybe more out there and not for this budget, but just the idea of having some money set aside for council to have legal advice as needed. You know, not a large amount, not a full-time thing, but just some legal advice for help with drafting ordinances, resolutions and amendments so that that has some dedicated staff time to help us with that. Um, and also for interpreting some of our code and just any other kind of legal services that might be helpful for council so that it's not coming or um, taking away from other city legal staff resources. My other thought was um, um, like to propose the amendment for the budget to include um, some language in it. And I'll preface by saying that this is not a typical thing that I would do or say. And this is done out of what I see as necessity to retain council power and uphold previous plans and to follow our own law, local laws and agreements. This is a procedural issue, not specifically a police issue. This is a procedural issue about keeping councils' rights um, as they are written, to my understanding, in the city code currently. So I would like to add something along the lines of um, for the budget, no for um, no resources financially or otherwise being spent on salaries or benefits for city employees on the mayoral staff-appointed positions as of June first, twenty twenty-one, that was subsequently moved to civil service for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two without prior council approval. And the purpose of that um, just being so that there's some more incentive to keep those appointments as appointed positions, since that's what we had on the agenda last week and it was said to be postponed. I am not under the understanding that it is the mayor's prerogative to take that right away from us, to appoint positions. The code says that the council and the mayor deem such positions necessary to be appointed. And so um, I think that's pretty clear that the mayor and the council would have to deem such positions necessary or unnecessary to be appointed. And I would not like to have those pulled without the council having the opportunity to vote on them, given the information, especially in such a short time period, without really official notice to council besides um, what we read in the media.
I think I'll ask city attorney to uh, weigh in on that in terms of what is the mayor and council um, responsibilities and roles here.
Well, I can kind of add to the conversation, I guess, and, and elaborate. I know council member uh, Bishop had emailed me earlier, I think, too, about that same issue. And, and so I provided my response to her. If you look at uh, the language in that particular ordinance section, I understand and acknowledge that it says mayor and council. Uh, I, I guess I would ask a question is, is did the council approve those positions to be put on some particular list in the past? And again, I don't, I don't know the history. I don't know how this came about in terms of creating this list uh, as lengthy as it is with all those positions on it. Was it merely just by mayor prerogative to add those to the list? And then it became part of that appointment process? Or was it a joint effort between the mayor and the council to add those positions to that particular list? If you read the section consistent with the earlier portion of it, it talks about mayor's appointment with council approval. So by that, it's the mayor's directive of appointing individuals in the council that merely approves or denies those appointments. If you look at the Civil Service Commission rules, they actually use the same type of language in terms of those who are appointed by the mayor. And so, and, and approved by the city council. And so I respect that the language says mayor and city council, but I think the question is a little bit bigger uh, and, and I think probably needs some history given to it to really kind of determine how this came about. Because I also think there's a bigger question of why? Why are those positions on that, on that particular list? And the question becomes is, does that need to be maintained that particular way? So I think as the mayor's alluded to, uh, you know, in my mind and in my opinion relative to the idea of these appointments, it's the mayor's appointment process with city council approval. And so, uh, again, there is, I, I think the, the possibility of debate, of course. With city council approval. And so again, there is, I, I think the possibility of debate, of course, as there always is with the words on the paper as it is. To decide what do they mean? I am suggesting to you, my opinion about that language is. But again, certainly open to council discussion about that. But I think that's where we find ourselves right now is because the mayor's trying to make those appointments has kind of historically been done. But now there's a big push on the idea of, you know, what is that truly supposed to look like? I know obviously during public comments. There were some suggestions that particular positions maybe should be pulled off. I, I think even some public comments thought of the ideas. Why are those particular positions in a list that have to be appointed by the mayor rather than a civil service kind of position? And so. You know, I think the overall perspective of this is a little bit bigger than. The idea of, well, this list just happens to be there and what do we do with it? It's a decision-making of why are they on the list to begin with and, and should the list be pared down anyway?
I can give you a little history and well, to go back, city code specifies a fairly small number of positions. That are required to be appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. Typically in cities with a mayor council form of government, this appointment process, process happens once. Once when the person is hired, first comes to work for the city, that approval goes to the city council. I've spoken, as I said last week, I guess I've added another city to it. I've spoken with both the mayor of Danville and the mayor of Springfield. Those are mayor, all dramatic forms of government. Both of them have relatively small lists of appointees, which are typically your department heads. Your police and fire chief, and then those prescribed by state law, which is the city attorney, city engineer. They were, they were very surprised by both the length of the appointees. People appointed in the city of Urbana and the fact that they were annual appointees. These other two cities, and I haven't found a city yet that does annual appointments like we do. Historically, these, this, the people on these lists changed over time depending on the jobs. Some, some jobs disappeared, some job descriptions changed, some jobs were eliminated. People were added, people were taken off. It's the mayor's, this, in a mayor council form of government, it's mayor's prerogative, the mayor's job. To bring appointments to the city council and it's the city council's job to consider them. And again, typically it's done once. It is not done annually. But city council does not have the right to add names to a list or. Remove, well, you haven't, you can remove names from a list by voting against appointments. But that's has not been done in the past here and I hope it doesn't happen again. But it's the mayor's job to bring appointments to the council. This is an administrative decision. Mayor, the council is a legislative body.
Grace. And then Chandra.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for the input on that and.
When I order, do we, do we have a, was this a motion?
This was a, I believe, an amendment, an initial amendment.
So, so does, does it have a second?
I'll second if it needs to be second.
Okay. Just wanted to check on that.
I thought that, okay, I, I thought that Mary Allison made the, the motion regarding the budget. And it's in the upcoming amendments that we had discussed earlier in the earlier discussion. I seconded that, that motion. And but that's what we're discussing now is different amendments. Grace brought up the other amendments. That she was talking about. Regarding the appointments, so.
I just needed to clarify that if there was a motion for an amendment, it required a second and Chandra has supplied that.
Um, Mary, I see your hand. Grace and Chandra had, had raised their hands already too. If there, there is a point of order, if we're doing this incorrectly, I think that's an important point for.
I think, I think it has been resolved.
So Grace, Chandra and Mary Alice.
Uh, thank you. Um, I appreciate the. Input on the point of order and I'm trying to understand this too. And also just to mention that, you know, for the other amendments, we didn't have an official motion and second and a vote as I believe. So I'm, would like to keep it consistent and following the procedures. As far as the comments on having a conversation on who we should be appointing, like what positions should be appointed in general. My understanding and what we said in the last meeting is that we already had those conversations with council members and staff. And we already agreed on the list of people who were up for reappointment on last week's agenda. And that it was said in the public comment that that would be postponed until next week. And it seems very improper and short notice, in my opinion, to pull those from appointment. To an entirely different position of civil service. In such a short time when we already had this conversation and we already had this list that we were going to vote on. We just needed information to make an informed decision. So I'm just asking that we follow the plan that was in last week's agenda and that we had talked about of postponing, not eliminating these reappointment positions. And so what I'm proposing here is that in the budget, we amend it so that any city employee who's moved to civil service without council approval. Since there is a possibility that that is legal, there's a possibility that it's not, it's open to interpretation. But I would like to have that, that they don't have the salary in the line item just as a preemptive thing. For preventing those positions from being moved from appointment to civil service within the next week without council approval or discussion.
And as I said, that is not council's decision. That is the mayor's responsibility and role in this city and in our form of government.
Yes, the appointing, yes, absolutely. I'm talking about the budget, which is the council decision, at least with approval. And we have the right to make amendments, which is what I'm proposing here now.
I, I guess if I might ask for clarification on the idea of what, what it, what it is that relates to the budgetary idea of whether or not their civil service or appointments. Their salary is what it is. I don't think that salary moves within the budget depending on whether they're civil service or appointed. I'm just asking for clarification on the idea of how that relates to, to a budgetary issue versus the main issue of whether they should be on the appointment list or not.
Um, I think just as a preemptive step in preventing or some incentive for not moving them to civil service without council approval.
I want to be mindful of, of requests to comment. So we had Chandra and then Mary Alice who were waiting. And then James.
I, I understand where Grace is coming from with, with this amendment. Especially after the article in the paper said, you know, it was her prerogative. Essentially, she was saying she was going to do, mayor was saying she was going to do. What she wanted to do, you know, it seemed like she was not considering. I, I guess I interpreted the statute as I, I, I did email Dave. And I interpreted as it's a, a joint agreement and if. If the two sides are not in agreement, then there should be a discussion and a conversation. It shouldn't be a unilateral decision.
Mary Alice and James.
So a couple of things. So Gracey, to your question about whether or not there was a first and a second for the amendment, it wasn't, it wasn't an official amendment. It was direction to staff to craft something for it. But my second, so it didn't require a first and a second. But my second thing is you proposed two different amendments. I would just like to say, can we have, can we have those split? Because right now it sounds like it's together. So I think your first one you were talking about was legal. And the second one you were talking about was appointments. I guess my, my question to Grace and, and Chandra, I think you're the one who seconded it. As if we can split those two amendments into, to, that one amendment to two amendments.
Yeah, I, I agree. I would, I would, I thought that the first amendment about the. The assessment, I thought that was one amendment and that was set. And I didn't know if we needed, you know, to say all the amendments in one sort of thing. But if we need to split it into two different ones, I think that would be fine.
Yes, I'm fine splitting those as well. And I think you're referring to the part about legal advice for council and the budget item. And that's fine, splitting those.
I have to.
Go ahead.
I just want to be mindful of my role as the chair. We had James and then I saw Sharice and the mayor. And I, I know lots of thoughts are, are out there, but I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak.
If we have divided the question, which one, which question are we talking, discussing at this point? Are we addressing the, the legal advice or are we addressing the budget limitation? We have to take them in an order, which, what's your preferences as chair? I think you get to decide that.
I would say because the discussion has focused on the question about reappointments, it makes sense to, to keep the discussion on.
Well, then, then I'll, then I'll make my comments about that one, which is. The, you know, reading through the language, you have to look at the whole, the whole ordinance as our legal advisor has mentioned. It's pretty consistent through state law and these kinds of situations. That the executive role has, is responsible for making the appointments and the legislative. Body has advice and consent, if you will. And so. The. I, I believe in the collaborative discussion about this, but collaborative discussion. Requires people to accept invitations. For that discussion and to pursue them. I'm, I'm concerned there's a lot of posturing and a lot of control here, but I don't think in the long run. If you dissect how our form of government works, that we will find that the city council. Gets to choose here. We get to approve or not approve. But the, the, the executive leader gets to choose the people that are going to execute on their job to be done. That's what the executive branch is, is about acting on it. And so I, I don't agree that this should be part of the budget ordinance. I think it's, I think it's the wrong place to do this. Budget amendments happen, putting a kind of restriction here. It, it doesn't, it doesn't set anything in stone. Those things can change later. I think, I think now is, this is not the place to do that.
Reese and then Mary.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand. Grace's amendment regarding. Appointments versus civil service. And. Maybe I'm, I'm losing something in the translation somewhere. Because I, I, I don't see the difference in what their salaries, the salary or, or what, how that would affect the budget at all. So. I just wanted to get a clarification of some kind. From Grace.
Is that all right? In point of order or are we going in?
I will, I'm, I'm asking, I guess I'm asking you for some, it was your. Amendment, I'm, I'm asking for some clarification.
Mayor Marlin, are you all right with that response being given before you speak?
Sure.
Um, what I see as the difference here is so all of the people who were up for reappointment last week was what we had, you know, kind of agreed upon. Was the plan that those positions need to be up for appointment for council review. And they have their salary set in the budget already as planned as appointed positions. What I'm proposing here is that if they are moved to civil service without council approval. That they would not have that same salary in the budget as civil service positions. And again, something that I hope would not have to happen. I'm not for taking anyone's salary. Again, this is just an incentive. For them not being moved to civil service without council approval within the next week before we have a chance to vote on these as planned.
Mary Marlin. Dan, did you still want to speak?
Yes, yes, I do. I'm thinking here a minute. My. Statement is this. We are two weeks from the end of the fiscal year. My job is to bring appointments to the city council. On an annual basis because that's what our city code requires at this time. There's no one who wants to review. And I've said for years that our entire process of requiring city employees, a whole lot of city employees, the whole leadership team. To go through an annual appointment process is insane. They don't need to. There are a number of positions that were added to that list, not for rational reasons. Over the years, different people had different reasons for adding people to that list and none of them make sense today. Things change. It makes no sense to compare the list of appointees that happened twenty years ago to who we have today. Things change in the city. And my whole goal when I took office was to bring and restore professional administration of this city. And that included our HR practices. We've begun that. There've been a lot of things to fix in this city. We didn't get around to fixing this appointment process yet. But there are certainly things we can look at. But we are so late in the year. We have so many needs in this city. We have. A lot happening on the streets of this community. And this continued discussion about who should be on the list, whether it's civil service or not, singling people out for their appointments. At this stage of the game is destabilizing, demoralizing and very destructive. You've been asked to appoint or approve the appointees brought to you. And once pass a budget and then once that's done, we can have a rational discussion about changes. And I certainly would bring to the table the recommendation that these appointments be semi-annual or once every four years. It makes no sense to make professional leadership in the city go through this process every year. And you can make a very strong argument for not having. Well, the, your decision about fire division chiefs is going to be taken out of your hands apparently in the next couple of years because of changes coming at the state level. I'm not sure when, well, I think the division chiefs were added to this list back in the nineties. I think the lieutenants were added in the mid two thousands. And other mid-level manager positions were added as they were created and it made no sense whatsoever. People on the list should be people who are in charge of departments, who are hiring and firing people and making policy. That doesn't include your division chiefs and your police lieutenants. They are operational. Just like your mid-level managers are. They're operational. So this discussion is getting far afield, but my God, the, the idea that you would tie a budget decision that you would deny salaries to people. Depending on where they, whether they were on or off a list is just unconscionable at this stage of the game. There are too many other things we need to focus on and we have to get this budget passed. And we have to be able to start addressing the needs of the city.
Do you want to raise a point of order? I appreciate the discussion, but want to make sure that it's not focusing on individuals. Probably should have done that earlier as well. So I apologize for my role in not clarifying my understanding from, from the, the role of the chair is to make sure that the, the conversation stays more general. Is there further discussion related to this question? Mary Alice.
You're me. Sorry about that. I just wanted to understand your amendment. Are you proposing that the salaries? If they are moved from appointments to civil service based on the list that we provided last week? That they get, don't, no longer exist in the budget? Or are you proposing that they are at a lower rate?
That they no longer exist in the budget, that there would not be financial or other resources. For the personnel if they were moved to civil service without council approval.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, I, I guess my, my stance is, is we need people to fill these roles. Regardless of, you know, what name is, is associated with that salary line. We have to have loose lieutenants. We have to have. We have to have lieutenants for the fire department. So we need the salary. So I, I think what I'm hearing is, is that. It, it's a, it's a carrot to try and for the appointments, but to me, we're talking about the budget. And do we need those positions in our city? My answer is yes, we need those positions in the city. Like we need those budgeted so that we can fill those positions. So I'm gonna vote no on this amendment.
Sasha and Dr. First and then Grace.
I'm, are we voting on amendments? We didn't vote on the other amendment. I'm confused. I'm, are we voting on amendments? We didn't vote on the other amendment. I'm confused.
So if you from, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a motion to approve the budget. And with some staff direction, and then you have an amendment, and then when the amendment is voted on, then we go back to the original motion. So, okay.
Grace.
Thank you. I absolutely agree that we need these positions as part of the city leadership. That's definitely not what I'm saying or implying here, and I would hope that that situation doesn't happen where people who we have agreed are appointed positions get moved to civil service without council approval in the next week, when there's nothing for us to do about it. I would really hope that that wouldn't happen, and I would hope that everyone, you know, does well at their job and continues to do it and get continues to be paid well and be fulfilled in it. As you said, yes, this is just an incentive to not disempower the council from approving appointments as they were already agreed upon. I I agree that this is late in the game to be doing this. I think it's also late in the game to be changing positions from appointment to civil service. And that this is, you know, an a last kind of avenue incentive for that and not something that I would typically recommend or support. I think that we need to have trust and respect for the council's role in the way that it's written and the way that we have agreed to do things so far for this reappointment process. Instead of, I think, underestimating and assuming what the council will vote and not giving us the opportunity to make our vote. Because that is the role. I understand the mayor presents the appointments and reappointments, and it's our job to vote on them. And there may be some positions that could be changed, but this is what we had talked about and agreed on for this year, and I don't think that should change. And I do have concerns that these appointments will be pulled to civil service before next week, before we have a chance to vote on them.
James.
Yeah, I I'd like to call the question because I'm not hearing any new new ground in the discussion.
Can I, Mary Alice, can you take the chair for one more moment?
Yes, I'll take the chair and share recognizes Jay.
I think there is a point of clarification that was raised about the legality of this, and I I think that maybe that's an important piece for us to know. And so I think going back to the original motion related to passing the budget on for for, you know, with no recommendation, rather. I think if this is something that that people want information about, as there's a conversation about accountability, I think it would be helpful to have clarity about whether this is a legal option or not. So I would suggest tabling it to allow for further investigation and then move the actual budget on to council with no recommendation so that we can further discuss it next week.
So point of point of order, we have two amendments because we divided an amendment, and we have to unravel the amendments before we can change the main motion. So I you don't table an amendment, you you persuade the person who made it to withdraw it.
Okay.
Or or we vote on it and and vote it up or down. And I I I will say again, I I would like us to vote on it.
Yeah, would you like the chair back?
I will take the chair back. Grace, I will, I guess I will check and see if you want to withdraw the amendment, or if you want to move forward with the vote.
I would like to move forward with a vote for that amendment about the budget and and I'm okay if we decide we need to table the one about legal advice for council, but just want to remind us that that was also another item.
Yeah, you can't, you could withdraw that amendment. You can't table it.
Oh, okay. No, I keep that one as well, then.
So I guess we are voting on whether to amend the budget to include the language that Grace noted about moving positions from appointment to civil service. Elizabeth, yeah?
If I could clarify, the budget is about numbers. So I guess I've been listening to this whole conversation. I what I what I believe is being proposed is that we take or just simply remove all those salaries for all those positions from the budget. In which case, they won't get back in the budget unless there's an amendment after the budget is approved. I mean, I don't, and maybe Dave can jump in. I I don't. I'm having a hard time with this.
Apologize, I I I agree that I think that is the concern. If the vote occurs and what that does is eliminate all of those positions from the budget going forward to be approved by the council. I suppose ultimately, when it comes back next week for approval, there could be another discussion and another amendment on the floor at that time prior to final vote to deal with that particular issue so that potentially you will have a budget with those positions in it going forward and funded going forward. But of course, there is that danger then that if no one does that, then those positions basically are ultimately eliminated, and those people are out of jobs.
Chandra. I mean, I guess we're at a point where there is no discussion. We're supposed to vote. Correct?
Well, you 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 have the prerogative as the chair to recognize someone to speak. Calling the question doesn't force it to be called.
I guess, then go ahead, Chandra.
I mean, I think that if it if we, you know, vote up or down this amendment, and it's it's in the budget and we're moving the budget for it with no recommendation, could it still be discussed and taken out next next week at council?
Sure, when when the motion's on the floor, you could you could make changes, right? It would be difficult for me to to come up with all those numbers on the spot for salaries for 19 people, but I could go and do it after the end of the meeting. You know, it's, I don't, I don't necessarily know that you're talking about all 19 or just some of the 19 or.
Diane.
There was a lot of discussion about humanizing and dehumanizing in in previous, it earlier in the meeting. And I just want people to think about the impact on the people whose salaries you are talking about. When you vote on this amendment and and their families and their lives. These are the people who conduct the day-to-day operations of the police department. And whether you like the policy that or practice that we have in place, this is a policy for HR for these appointments that we all inherited, that we're all living with, that, yes, we agree, need to be improved. And as I said, I'm the first one who said it, and I've said it for years. We just had a lot to fix over the past few years. We've done a lot. COVID hit. We have a lot of work to do, and I want to work with you. But I I have never, in my experience on the council, and certainly not the last three or four years with the as mayor, have have encountered an amendment quite like this that was willing to tie a position to people's lives and livelihoods and actual salaries in a budget. And the message that sends to the people who work for this city, and it reverberates far, far beyond the four people we're talking about here. This is this, you can bet that every single city employee is going to listen to this discussion tonight and and do some real soul searching on the basis of it. So I would ask you to to seriously consider the human impact that this vote will have on people. And yes, going forward, we can, we can tackle this process the same way we've tackled many, many other processes in the city and improve things. But there's ways to do things, and this isn't.
Want to be conscious of time, that it's 10:26. I believe we need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'm moved that we extend the meeting till 11 o'clock.
Second.
Thank you. Maybe if we could have final comments, I saw Grace and Chandra and then.
So so Robert's actually actually dictates that people are only supposed to speak twice. And they're not sup- and they're not supposed to keep bringing the same points over and over again. It's 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 circular. And it's not going anywhere. So I would ask people, unless you're going to bring new new things to the table, it is is time to vote this up or down.
Okay, just point of order. We have to vote on the extension of the time first.
All right, yes. So we we had a motion by Mary Alice and a second by James. Is there any further discussion? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Sorry.
Yes.
I lost track. Sorry, that motion passes. All right, so I think we are voting on whether or not to approve the amendment as stated by Grace.
I'm bringing up something new, James. So how about this for a compromise? Mayor, if you would bring back the positions that you're moving to civil service back into play, Grace, would you please withdraw your amendments? We're not voting on salaries.
I haven't made that decision yet.
I would be willing to do that if we were in agreement, but since we're not, then no.
All right, so I think we need to vote. Is that correct? The clerk, please call the roll.
What are we voting on now?
Whether it's sorry, to approve the amendment as stated by by Grace to the budget.
Okay. Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Miss? Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
No.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Wu?
No.
That motion fails. Am I correct, Grace, that you withdrew your other budget amendment?
No, I did not withdraw that.
You did not. You so are we voting on that? Yes, James, and then Mary Alice.
And we can discuss that that second half of that, the other half of that amendment. And and I I was going to say, at this, at this point, I I I think we, there are two things that need to be answered here, and that is we would need funding for legal work if there was a situation where the hired legal staff of the city is unable to do the work that council requests to be done. It is, it is a model where if we have an ordinance, we'd like to see written. I understand that legal staff is available to help us do that. I would, I would say that my only concern here, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supportive of us setting money aside to do that at this point, because I'm not clear that we don't already have the resource to do that. The the question is, though, if a council member wants to work on something, and though that work has to be routed through a layer or two of administration to get the work done, I think that could be a barrier for council people to move things forward that they're interested in. So I would, I would want to have insurances that that if the staff is available to support us, that we would be able to work with them directly on things. And and if that were the case, I would not see the need for this.
Mary, I close and then Diane.
Yeah, I was just going to tell you my experience. So so far in my experience, if I've had a legal question about ordinance interpretation or assistance in writing something or even other something that's related to our city business, I've always been able to reach out to the city attorney or in future, perhaps, Dave, and and I've never run into any issue with that. They've always answered my questions for me.
Mayor Marlin.
I would just ask Carol Mitten to weigh in on this and to kind of give you an overview of process in terms of how an ordinance or resolution actually comes into being. It doesn't start with the legal staff. That's kind of like the end of it. So you 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 start with, depending on what it is, and Sharice had experience with her resolution on racism. So that's another, and there've been other ordinances brought by council members in the past, but Carol, do you want to address that?
Sure. I mean, if somebody has an idea about the substance of an ordinance, then ideally, they work with me. Sometimes we have people that make proposals that then we have to work sort of remedially to get them in the right kind of shape to to become a resolution or an ordinance. But ideally, you come to me and 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 say, this is what I substantively would like to do, and then we work on the language. And then after we have the the sort of the business part of it sorted through, then the 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 legal department will take a look at it and make sure that it's in the right kind of of format. But, you know, in in this particular case, there there isn't even a dollar amount attached to it, so I don't know how this would be part of the budget discussion anyway, unless you're going to attach a dollar amount to it. But it is all embedded, and we haven't come up with a situation yet where there hasn't been adequate funding to get things done. Sometimes there isn't an adequate amount of time, but we're still talking about using the same individuals as as I understand it. Sorry, maybe I didn't cover everything.
I'll I'll just, I'll just add, I mean, you know, and and James, you probably maybe had experience on the county board, but you know, the bulk of an ordinance or a resolution is is the nuts and bolts, the logistics, the language, making sure it's operationally even feasible. You know, you, it's it's staff working with council members. And then at the end, you get you get legal review to make sure we're, you know, following the law and crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. But but it's the working together with staff and finally legal review at the end. Sharice, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not leading the meeting. Bye, hard.
Okay, I I just want to say this. I don't think we need to have an extra anything line added to the budget so that legal staff does such as such so-and-so regarding a real resolution. You want to write a resolution, you go in and you ask someone, what do I do? That's what I did. It's not that difficult, and they will work around your schedule. They worked around mine to for you to go in and they will help you word it. They will help you research it. They will research it for you even. All you just have to do is just let people know and and it wasn't something that where I had to, you know, do anything special. I didn't have to fill out any papers. I just had to say, this is what I want, and this is how I want it to be. And this is what I wanted to say. And and I was given all kinds of assistance, and really, you don't need a line item thing to 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 make legal do that. That's because of the simple fact that I did work with staff, which, by the way, other legislators, that's what they have. They have staff to do a lot of their writing of ordinances and legislation and statutes and so on and so forth. The Supreme Court judges have clerks. They they write their 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 stuff. Then, you know, that's what you do. So you come in and you get help, and that's, it's not that difficult. It was a little daunting to that the fact that I even wanted to do that kind of took me aback a bit, you know, wanting, trying to make that come to fruition. So but I would not have been able to do it successfully without staff. And they were very helpful and and giving of their time. No problem.
Grace.
Thank you. For the sake of time, I will I take back my motion, whatever the word is. I take that off the floor for the sake of time. And I was also originally kind of more of the intent of an idea or staff directive or thing to look into more than an official amendment. So I will take that back.
So that amendment is withdrawn. I think unless there is further discussion, we are at a point of actually voting on the budget. Correct? And the motion that is on the floor is And the motion that is on the floor is still for approval. Right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
There's already a motion, Jay.
Sorry, there's a motion for approval. So can someone remind me? I apologize. This is a while ago.
I'll call the roll. That's, that's it?
Call the roll. Thank you.
Or recommending the budget with recommendation for approval.
With recommendation for approval, including the amendments listed in the agenda as well as the 1,800, 100, excuse me, $186,758 for an evaluation of public safety needs with a focus on racial systemic racism and social justice.
Just one point of clarification, Jay. It wasn't specifically an amendment. It was staff direction to include it.
Okay. Thank you for that point of clarification. So I think we're at the point of, could the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a resol, is resolution number 2021-06-024R, Resolution Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for 2021.
So you have the, you have the Capital Improvement Plan before you. We have Will Kold Chowsky and Tim Cowan available if you have any last minute questions, but we recommend approval.
Are there any questions from the staff? Chris?
Yes, if we approve the capital improvements plan tonight, are we locked into the plan over the next couple of years that we saw? And do we have any opportunity later to amend if, if we need to?
So what I'll, what I'll say about that is that the plan, even though it's a five-year plan, is really only a one-year plan. You're, you're really only voting on what's happening in the next fiscal year. But we, I mean, because these are multi-year projects, and we are prioritizing, we do, and we are seeking grants, we do want to have a plan that, that lays out what we anticipate doing. But the only thing that you're really binding the council to is the next year. And then we do bring amendments, for instance, when things go over budget.
Grace?
Thank you. That was a similar question I had about the 23 plan is that this is just for this year. You're saying the plan is still something that we will get to next year in the next year's budget?
Yes, you will vote, you will vote on it on a rolling basis. So it's, you, you, you're only binding the council to the, the next year. Although, you know, if it is a multi-year project, the expectation is you don't take us halfway through a project and then change, change the, the funding plan for, for a given project if it's multi-year.
And for the, for the design work, is that, you know, like, would there be options or more kind of input on that? Or like, do you already have specific designs? Because it seems like a lot of these big projects, the design work is this year in '22, and then the plan in '23. Although we're not really locked into it, like you said, if we already spent however many hundreds of thousands of dollars on a design, that would be a big waste of money if we don't go through with it. So I wonder kind of how locked in those designs are, or if this is like still an exploratory design.
Well, if you're asking for something like fire stations, for instance, we fully anticipate that we will be bringing options because we have more of a placeholder budget for something like that because there's, there's, the scope has, has really not been fully defined. So we, we would, we would bring options back, and then you decide how robust the funding that you want to apply to that would be. Depending on, on the particular projects you have in mind, some road projects, even though they have designed, the scope is more limited. There's not, there aren't as many options with certain road projects. So if you had a specific project in mind, maybe you could ask that. But in many cases, we'll be bringing back options to you.
Mary Allison?
So for the city building reconfiguration, you have, under the project description, you have design costs of $42,000, construction costs of $1.14 million. But in the actual budget, we have $142,000. Is that a typo? What is the correct amount? It's on page five of the facilities. So city building reconfiguration.
I think the typo is the 42. I think it's probably 142. It's probably about 10%. What do you think?
Yeah, that's correct. That's 142 for design in the project book. The one got spliced away somehow.
Okay, all right. And then, yeah, I have small minor questions, but nothing to hold this up for tonight. That was my big one.
Any other questions for Tim, Carolyn? Grace?
Thank you. And I appreciate us having some kind of updates and input on some of the design work so that we can, you know, make informed and kind of collaborative decisions about the 23 budget. Do you have a plan on when that typically happens? Like at the end of next year or like quarterly, or is there any kind of system for updates on that design work for the CPI?
Well, it's been, it's been kind of a long time since we built anything. We haven't built anything other than roads since I've been here. So I think as, as the, as the scoping gets developed, I mean, we're, we're, we're meeting now to develop an RFP to get a design firm on board to help us develop those options. And so I think we'll be coming to you mid-year, mid-fiscal year because we're going to have a set of options. And then they will need to, we'll all need to hone in on an option that they can then develop the design further. So we're going to need to check in with council, you know, multiple times through the development of that, those, those alternatives.
Any other questions or do we have a motion?
I can make a motion if there aren't any more questions. I move that we move resolution number 2021-06-024R, Resolution Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for 2021 to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
A second.
All right, so it has been moved by Mary Allison and seconded by Sharice to send resolution number 2021-06-024R, Resolution Adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for 2021 to council with a recommendation for approval. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2021-06-025R, A Resolution Approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement for RPC Senior Repair Program.
Sheila will be handling this. Yeah. Hi, this is Sheila Dodd. This is a program that the city staff has implemented over the past 20 years, and it's been very successful. About a year and a half ago, our rehab technician retired, and we haven't replaced him. And we feel this program is important enough that we would really like to keep it going. And partnering with senior or with Regional Plan Commission is a good partnership because when they go into the home, they can look at, maybe this person might benefit from Meals on Wheels, or maybe they need a bathroom modification. And they can recommend those other services that the person would need where our staff just doesn't have the ability or the expertise to offer those. This was approved as part of the annual action plan budget that was adopted by council in April. And staff does recommend moving forward. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Sheila? Mary Allison?
I actually don't have any questions for Sheila, but Sheila provided some answers for me today that I wanted to share with council. First of all, and, and maybe this speaks a little bit to some of the discussions earlier where Sharice was asking about the success rate or, or not of different programs. But in the annual report, they'll let us know how many people were served and with these services, with these funds. So that would be included in, Sheila, correct me if I'm wrong. Is, which report is that called? That would be.
Oh, it's, it's called the CAEPER, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And after our call, Mary Allison, I did go back and look, and we averaged between 10 and 12 projects a year.
Okay.
Looking back like the past four or five years.
Thank you. And then the second thing is, is I just caught, I don't know if it was a typo or whatever, but in terms of documentation, there, it said that only ethnic information for each person served would be submitted. And Sheila said that adding embrace into that as well would be fine. So just wanted to add that so council knew those answers.
Right. And that's a requirement of HUD that it is race and ethnicity.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sheila?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to refer Resolution Number Resolution Approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement for RPC Senior Repair Program to council for approval.
Can I, can I suggest that we put that on the consent agenda?
I would, I would accept that.
And I would second that.
All right. It's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Allison to send Resolution Number 2021-06-025R, Resolution Approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement for RPC Senior Repair Program to council with, with a recommendation for approval and on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Yes. Okay. Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes. That motion passes. I think I have a point of clarification. We're at 10:49. I believe that we are not allowed to go past 11 o'clock. Is that correct? I guess we can try to do this quickly. Next, we have a resolution, Resolution Number 2021-06-026R, A Resolution to Approve an Amendment to a Tornado Siren Intergovernmental Agreement.
Very quickly, we jointly operate with, with several other Champaign County jurisdictions, our outdoor warning sirens. It's all been digitized. This would amend the existing IGA to, to do, to add PESODOM and Sidney to that collaborate, collaborative relationship. And I would ask that you approve it.
James?
I would assume because this is a digital system that the alert capabilities can be pinpointed so that, you know, if, if some, some area, so if PESODOM is, needs to have their alert, the sirens run, we're not going to hear them in Urbana unless it's also impacting us.
That's not how it's used right now. It's used by a, well, actually, maybe, I don't know if Chuck knows, but they use a polygon. And wherever the polygon lands, those are the sirens that go off.
But it's, it, they don't all go off. They go off based on the region impacted, right?
I think so. I can get, I can follow up on that.
Okay. And it's cheaper if we all go in together.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carol? Go ahead, Mary Allison.
You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you. It's getting late. I'll move that we move Resolution Number 2021-06-026R, Resolution to Approve an Amendment to a Tornado Siren Intergovernmental Agreement to the consent agenda to City Council.
A second.
All right, it has been moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Chandra to send Resolution Number 2021-06-026R, Resolution to Approve an Amendment to a Tornado Siren Intergovernmental Agreement to Council with a recommendation for approval and on the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say real quick that sirens are still important. They're important to people in houses. They're important during the day. They're important at night. So I'm glad to see that we're still committed to the siren system. I do want to, in the future, look at some citizens being part of the group that looks at the siren alert policy, how, when they choose to alert and not, because I was one of the homes that lost three trees to the tornado that was not siren. That was a unique event and unusual, hard to catch. But one of the messages was we, we didn't want to do the siren because it was at night. People weren't outside. That, that was our message that came through with that. And I think the decisions on the policy has, have been handled by appropriate people, the, the first responders and the emergency management folks. But, but they need to hear from citizens too about how much we would tolerate false alarms in, in order to make sure we don't miss an important alarm. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Would it be possible for us to refer the remaining two to council without approval or without recommendation? So that they could move forward and we could, I don't know that there's going to be a lot.
We're not going to be able to get to them.
Deal into them, but we could get them referred to council without recommendation before we're done.
Yeah. Is there a motion to move the remaining two items, ordinance number 2021-06-025, an ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned real estate, and Resolution Number 2021-06-027R, Resolution Adopting the Supplemental State Motor Fuel Tax Resolution for Lincoln Avenue slash Springfield Avenue or Surfacing Project onto council with no recommendation?
I would move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James and seconded by Chandra. Will the clerk please call the roll?
No, discussion, please.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, yeah. No, because I really wanted to discuss item number 12 and two of the properties on item number 12. That, so I really kind of want to discuss that. I can't, so I can't, I can't vote for that. But, and I don't see any reason why we can't just go on and get these last two resolutions over tonight so that we don't have to, otherwise, we have to meet in another couple of days to finish out this meeting.
No, you wouldn't.
Oh, we don't?
If you send it.
Go ahead.
If you send it to council without a recommendation, you have an opportunity at council meeting to make a discussion at that time. It doesn't, it doesn't tie your hands where you can't talk about it. But that's something that you can.
But that's something that you can do no matter what.
Okay.
Think about it.
Yeah.
I don't think we will have time to discuss both tonight, because we only have four minutes. Mary, Mar- Marlon?
Your other option is to reconvene this meeting for a short, you know, to continue the meeting tomorrow night at five thirty. Shouldn't take too long to finish up the last two items. So you do have the option of reconvening tomorrow. Or doing what James said.
The current motion is to move it to council with no recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, we'll move it to council without recommendation.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yeah.
Ms. Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Um. I believe we are all set, so um, seeing no further business, I think this meeting is adjourned.